Nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McCarthy. Councilmember Shimonie, our mission statement.
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Salas, our land acknowledgement, please.
I'm honored to do so, Mr. Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as whole.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Down to agenda item number four, which is our general public participation. City Clerk, do we have anything for tonight?
Yes, Mayor, we have Ms. Dawn Rodriguez. Give me just one quick second, and we will have her ready to go. All right, Ms. Rodriguez, if you would like to go ahead, you have three minutes to address Mayor and Council.
Over 400 structures flooded last year, and not many worse than at Dorathea. We asked that the drain be clean because it was half full of sediment. We were told it would not be clean because the fine sediment would wash down the drain at the next rainfall. Yet it was cleaned when the ABC 15 news crew came two weeks later to film it. In July, staff added concrete blocks to cover the drain. They said it was to slow the water down. This technique has not been performed anywhere else in the city. We asked that the blocks covering the drain be removed because they would cause a swirl. They are still there, and this swirl was so powerful that it busted up a wooden fence. These blocks were a last-minute so-called solution done without fully understanding the situation. These blocks have a purpose, but not at the same place as where they had already built a dam. They are not using engineering standards in the correct manner. Seco Arroyo was fortified with Jersey barriers and channels were built to divert the water. No dams were built at this location. We asked that Dorathea be fortified with the same type of Jersey barriers in the same manner as at Seco Arroyo, and we were denied. Instead of Jersey barriers, they placed sandbags. The placement of these sandbags was not up to engineering standards either. The drain at Chris's Double D Tire does not have a drain, a grate on the drain. We have been asking for the grate to be removed at Dorathea for 18 years. Chris's Double D Tire also has a cement lining to help with the flow. Dorathea was denied this because we were told that the cement walls would move the water faster, and it needed to be slowed down. Everything denied at Dorathea was in place at Chris's Double D Tire was said to be for safety. For safety, the area is enclosed by a chain-link fence at Chris's Double D Tire, but it was denied at Dorathea. It's ironic that these measures inferiorly implemented due to the fence falling over are okay next to a Little League field, a trailer park, motels, and a convenience store which sells alcohol, but is not good enough for Dorathea. We are asking that you keep attending meetings we aren't allowed to go to and keep asking questions, especially after understanding the constant repetition of errors at Dorathea. And I apologize for not addressing the council in the correct manner earlier. As always, I was having technical issues. So thank you for listening to me, Mayor Ducey, and Vice Mayor Daggett, and to all the council members. I see you guys have a big load tonight, so thanks for taking the time to hear me out today as always. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. We really do appreciate you and making sure that we continue to have this at the forefront of our minds. So thank you. Do we have any public participation, other public participation?
Mayor, we do not at this time.
All right, well, that brings us to our agenda item 5A of our Proclamations and Recognitions. This is the recognition for Fire Station 1B Shift Crew Unit Commendation and Citizen Heroism Award. Chief Gaylord.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to recognize some of our firefighters and one of our citizens. I'd ask that all those being honored, including Mr. Beck, turn their cameras on, and I'll turn mine off so I can tell you a little bit about why they're being honored. Mayor and Council, it's my honor to recognize several individuals this afternoon. I'll turn off my camera, as I said, and our team and Mr. Beck are now seen on camera. On January 11th, 2022, Mr. Jordy Beck was swimming laps at a local athletic club. Mr. Beck noticed that a fellow swimmer had suddenly submerged to the bottom of the pool. Mr. Beck quickly pulled the man from the water and began effective CPR until Flagstaff Fire Department B-Shift Engine One, with Captain Bobby Romero, Engineer Austin Root, firefighter Kate Williams, and the crew from Guardian Medical Transport, arrived on scene to administer advanced life support. Shortly thereafter, B-Shift Engine Six, with the crew of Daniel Schaefer Chavez, Engineer Josh Crane, and firefighter Earl Gutierrez arrived to assist in patient care at the scene and also while in transit to the hospital in the Guardian ambulance. While en route to the hospital, the patient had a return of respirations and was conversing with his caregivers. Mayor and Council, a Citizen Heroism Award is awarded to a person outside the fire department who's been involved in life-saving effort at an emergency scene before the arrival of the fire department, who has provided extraordinary assistance to the fire department members in an emergency situation. Mr. Jordy Beck is on the call, and he certainly met the test of this award. And I'll pause for a moment while we recognize Mr. Beck's Citizen Heroism Award.
Thank you very much. That's much appreciated. Very fortunate to be in the right place at the right time for that gentleman.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Mr. Mayor and Council, continuing our presentation. A unit commendation is awarded when a unit acts with courage, resourcefulness, and/or perseverance in the performance of their duties and resulted in the protection of life and property, the prevention of serious injury or death, or exceptional quality service to the department or the community. All of us at Flagstaff Fire Department are grateful for the example set by these two crews. And a unit commendation is awarded to the crews of Station 1 and Station 6B for their professional conduct and performance on this incident. To the crews of Engine 1 and 6, thank you and great job. Really appreciate your effort.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Beck, the character of a person can really be shown by emergency situations and how immediate reaction occurs to help another individual. And I just want to personally thank you, thank you for your service, and to our units of Station 1 and 6B for saving lives, for taking care of our community, and acting in a time that was not only needed, but really it was essential in ensuring that our community is safe. And thank you, thank you so much. And I'd be happy to open this up to other members of council if you would like to say our gratitude towards all of you in this circumstance. Councilmember Shimonie.
You know, I'll just echo that this is just an amazing story, and thank you all so much. We're really honored and blessed to have you all in our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. And I have seen lots of hearts, smiles, claps from our other members of council. So just please know our gratitude towards your heroic acts. And we so dearly appreciate these types of stories and these actions from members of our community as well as members of our departments who act with heroism. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we're very grateful for the opportunity to recognize Mr. Beck and our firefighters tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief Gaylord. With that, we are down to agenda item number 6A. This is our City Manager Report. City Manager Clifton, please take us away.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. That's a hard act to follow. And I'll give it my best. You have in front of you or in your packet the manager's report dated February 11th for this meeting. I'm just going to skim through and touch on a few things, and after my comments, I will invite representatives from both Water Services and Sustainability to give a very high-level overview of what's included in the monthly updates that are appended to my report from both those respective divisions. I'd like to start by giving recognition to an employee who has retired. Carol Anne McCoy actually retired last month, and we're a little bit after the fact recognizing her. Forgive me for that. Carol Anne McCoy served the city for over 27 years. She was hired in 1994. She oversaw the accounts payable program during most of her tenure. Very strong work ethic, trusted by all, loved by all, extremely dedicated. And I'd like to quote what Rick Tatter had to say about Carol Anne McCoy and her retirement. Quote, "I have worked with Carol Anne since, starting with the city over 26 years ago, and she has been an extremely trustworthy, dedicated, and responsible person to our organization." Thank you, Rick, for that quote. Thank you, Carol Anne, for your service to the organization and to the community. I'd like to congratulate the graduation of Recruit Academy 2021-22. There are many new members to the Flagstaff Fire Department whose names are in my report, along with their smiling faces. Give that a nice read. We welcome this fine group. Switching over to our law enforcement. I'd like to also point out that Deputy Chief Mansfield and Chaplain Bradford and Lieutenant Turley attended the Police Academy graduation in Phoenix. For an individual who is now joining our ranks, we'd like to welcome Everett Stembridge into our officer and training program. Look forward to meeting him in person. You have a nice picture of him in your report. Welcome, Everett. We look forward to having you here. Some updates from PROS and some very good news there. I'm not going to belabor, but I would invite you to give a read to that. And the recognition of Flagstaff as a tree city for the 14th year in a row, which is very cool. Some updates from our Public Works Department. And I will note that many of us had a very nice tour of the High Country Humane Facility late last week. I will also note that we are out for solicitation of bids related to the Flagstaff Performing Arts Center. This has been a long work in progress. Thank you to the procurement team and legal and all who's had their hands on this real estate. It's been a very collaborative effort, much work to come yet, but we're on our way. With that, Council, if you don't have any questions of me at this time, I'd like to invite probably Lisa Dean with Water Services to give you an overview. She'll be followed by somebody from Sustainability to do the same. Any questions?
Thank you. City Manager, Council, do we have any questions before we turn it over to Ms. Dean?
Thank you.
I am not seeing any at this time. So yeah, take us away, Ms. Dean.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to present the December monthly report. The January was completed. However, it has not been submitted to the City Manager's office yet. We are a busy crew, and with budget, we are working our best to keep up on all of our communications. We started off December, actually, with a holiday, a virtual holiday party at the different sites. It was on a team's meeting, but we did have different members from each facility bring breakfast to the work sites, and even we found a way to have some secret Santa fun. Joe Almenderis, our wastewater collection supervisor, celebrated 26 years as a member of Team Flagstaff. He also oversees the stormwater combo truck and the stormwater crew that we have working. And we did not have a meeting in December for the Water Commission. However, in January, we welcomed five new commission members, two returning and five new ones. Don Bills, John Nauman, Kurt Regelman, Joe Lebrich, and Robert Verdilde. They should hopefully bring some new life and energy to our Water Commission. Gary Miller is busy at taking on his position as our Engineering Section Director, working towards filling the position for our plan review that Jim Davis, who'd worked with the city for many years, had left, and just getting an idea of what all of our projects and the budgets that go along with that. We did have, I'm going to move over a little into January. We did have a remarkable retirement. Mark Richardson retired on January 7th, and he was our Operations Section Director. He always liked to think he's leaving things better than when he found it, and I believe that he did. It will continue, but it will be different, and we thanked him for his service and had a little acknowledgement party for him that week that he left. All of the sections are work on a daily basis. The work that they do is not necessarily out in the public field. However, every time you turn on your towel, flush your toilet, or see your stormwater drains working, or see, of course, we're not watering our lawns yet with reclaimed water. It's a result of the work that's being done. And wintertime is a time that the crews actually do take care of a lot of the housekeeping. At the water, Lake Mary Water Treatment Plant, they've shut down Lake Mary, and they're working on replacing a valve. It's six valves, very critical valves. It cannot be turned off. But since the plants are up, the demand is lower, and Lake Mary levels are lower, this is a prime time for them to be working on that, as well as working on the testing at our new wells. McAllister, which is pretty much almost there. They're still working on some of the Skata bugs, and then the Fort Tuttle Number Two. Water Reclamation Plants, they're still on COVID schedule. I mean, and that reminds us that this is still something that's heavily impacting them and the staffing that they're working with, that we're working with. Let's see. Water Conservation was our poster child in December. They tabled events. They handed out stocking stuffers of aerators and other fixtures at the different events at the Holiday Market on December 4th. They've been working with the Junior Academy, Flagstaff Junior Academy, on retrofit. So this is a new program that they're working on to help bring the schools in to get the best water conservation and most efficient use of water within schools and businesses. So with the success that we've seen at FJA, we're going to be moving on to other schools that we can help identify needs and help them save water. I think they felt that they had like a 25% reduction in consumption is the estimate. So they're going to be tracking that to see if those numbers are correct. Not only do we ask people to conserve water, we look at how we use our water. So the non-revenue water audit was just completed in the end of January, and we're looking at all the ways that we, within our own system, within our own housekeeping, can be the most efficient and make sure that we're tracking all the water that's being produced. We're getting ready for our Water Awareness Month in April. It's going to be right around the corner, and I'm sure you'll be hearing a lot regarding that. With that, does anyone have any questions on the December report? And I promise to send the January report very soon.
Any questions from Council? I'm not seeing any at this time. So thank you, Ms. Dean.
Thank you.
With that, we can kick it over to the next presenter. Ms. Antonopoulos.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. I'm going to share my screen quickly. In defense of post-vacation, I believe that I sent in the wrong file for our January report. So I'm going to share my screen with the council and just provide some highlights from the Sustainability section. I'm really pleased to announce that Steve Thomas has joined our team as our volunteer event coordinator. He's been on board since January, and he is jumping right in. In fact, we're really pleased to announce that he has helped to coordinate an 80-plus-member volunteer cleanup this coming weekend as a result of some concerns about litter and debris in the South Side. So as I mentioned, Steve is jumping right in, and he's got a very strong background in education. And we're really excited to expand our community stewards programming to really be and pivot towards more proactive measures and litter education and so forth. So you'll be hearing a lot more from Steve in the coming months. We also have our new sustainable food systems, AmeriCorps Vista. Jake has joined our team as well just recently, and he will be working to help engage and promote our food systems work and specifically focusing on our community gardens. So we're really pleased to have Jake on board as well, and this is just another example of our continued partnership with NAU AmeriCorps programming. For our climate action areas, you may recall, did provide the council with a quarterly update back in January on the carbon neutrality plan and all of our work. I am really pleased to let the council know that the Flagstaff Unified School District has formed an advisory committee to work on climate action, and we have representation from sustainability staff to assist with those discussions. Our Climate Engagement Coordinator, Jenna Ortega, is working with FUSD. So we're pleased to be partnering with them and provide as much assistance as we can in terms of climate action opportunities for the school district. And then one other announcement from the climate team is that we did host our Climate Ambassador Training on January 26th and 27th. We did have five people attend that workshop, and it was held virtually. Returning to community stewards and litter prevention, council may recall that we have had a very successful effort with our winter snowplight stewards, and we've had a few cleanups over the last month, both in January, one on the 4th and the 25th. And these members of our community are just incredibly dedicated to going out and assisting with snowplight area cleanups. And let me just scroll down. And even though it was January and relatively cold and windy, we had 68 volunteers who dedicated more than 100 hours collectively of their time to help keep Flagstaff clean and beautiful. In our energy programming, we hosted our Home Energy Efficiency Workshop. We had one virtual workshop on the 24th with six attendees, and this rounds out our workshops that we've provided to four for the winter season. And we've done two in person and two remotely. And we are continuing our work, as we discussed back in January, on our energy conservation contract. And as highlighted in our presentation in January, we've started conducting audits in city facilities. And I just want to send out a huge shout-out to all the city staff that are assisting us in this effort because it is a heavy lift. And then just dropping down, we're excited also to announce that our community garden program is expanding. And we are actually going to be taking in our garden registration and communication and monitoring and verification and data tracking in-house. And Summer White, who is our Waste Reduction and Food Systems Coordinator, will be leading that effort. We will continue to partner with our friends at Terra Birds, who has been graciously helping us manage the gardens since 2015. And they're really going to pivot to more education and work dates in the community gardens. So we're really excited for this direction that we're going in with our gardens as well as excited for our community partners, Terra Birds. And with that, Mayor and Council, I will entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Antonopoulos. Council, any questions? I'm not seeing any, so I would like to also state, as Councilmember Sweet has in the chat box, welcome Steve and welcome Jake to the team. You have an awesome team, and we're really excited for your help and all the work that you do to be expanding our efforts in sustainability. So welcome.
Thank you.
City Manager.
I think with that, you have the report. I would like to add one more thing. I don't know if it was mentioned, but Steve Thompson was, our new volunteer, has already been quite active and oversaw a trash or litter pickup in one of our neighborhoods. I wanted to personally thank Steve for his volunteer efforts, which were greatly appreciated. That's all for me.
Thank you, City Manager. With that, we are down to agenda item 7A. This is our COVID-19 update. Deputy City Manager.
Can you see that all right? Getting in the slideshow here.
Yep, good to go.
All right. So this is our COVID-19 update. Today, we will be going over our standard data, looking at the Coconino County Health and Human Services Dashboard as well as the hospital census from Flagstaff Medical Center. Rose will join us for the Navajo Nation and Hopi Tribe data review, as well as the Indigenous Nations update. Then I will come back with City Council to discuss the council meeting format so that we know what we want to do moving forward with our council meetings. So diving right, our COVID-19 weekly cases has decreased to 934, which, as we can see, that data is coming down as quickly as it spiked, which is great news. There were a few more cases reported for the week prior, January 29th. That increase from the 1707 previously reported to the 1927 you see on the screen. As far as our cases by geographic area, this is our third week of a downward trend here in Flagstaff for our number of COVID cases, and we are seeing a similar downward trend for the last couple of weeks with our surrounding tribal communities as well. So very good news. Our weekly case counts for hospitalization that are COVID-related, we're seeing that number kind of go up and down over the last couple of weeks. The 39 reported for January 29th still remains the same, and we have 26 for this most current week ending on February 5th. Our ages 20 to 44 and 65 and older are still the groups that are seeing the largest number of hospitalizations due to COVID. One of the questions that was asked was what percentage of these individuals are or are not vaccinated? Wanted to verbalize that Coconino County Health and Human Services is working on pulling that data together. As communicated a couple of weeks ago, there's been some changes. As communicated a couple of weeks ago, there's been some changes on how vaccination status is reported by the Arizona Department of Health Services. And so they're trying to take that into account with creating those additional calculations in relation to hospitalization. So they are working on it and that information, once completed, will be added to the weekly report. So we'll be able to see it week by week. As we move on to our COVID-related deaths, the week prior January 29th, we did see one more case reported there. So it went from three to four. And then our week ending February 5th, we had three deaths reported so far. Looking at our community transmission rate, it continues to be high, but we are continuing to see a downward trend. So again, 660.1 is the incident rate per 100,000, which this compares to 1,206.5 for the week prior. So some terrific numbers this week. The 19.2% positivity has also decreased from 25.4% the week prior. And then again, our COVID-like illness has also decreased from 10.6% is this week, and we were at 15.3% last week. So really good news there. Our community vaccination, as we continue to figure out the new numbers, we are at 63.9% vaccinated compared to 67.4% for the previous week. Again, the reason that we're being impacted in this way is just because we do have towns that cross county lines. And so that's why we're seeing some adjustment to the eligible people vaccinated here in Coconino County. When we look at our variants, we continue to see both the Delta variant and the Omicron variant increase in the numbers. The Delta variant went up by 40 samples to the 2,733 you see on the screen. And the Omicron is now 437 larger at the 1,154. Of note, our breakthrough cases for those who've been vaccinated is at 25.8% now compared to 24.8% the week prior. When we look at the statistics for our Flagstaff Medical Center, the number of positive patients has decreased from 61 the previous week to the 48 that you see on the screen. So a decrease of 13 patients. We previously had one pending COVID patient, which is now zero. And our hospital beds, we originally had 42 last week. We're down to 37 this week for a total of five less hospital beds. But the good news is, is critical care has additional capacity. When we reported last week, there were three critical beds available. Now we have five. So there's additional two beds available there. I heard from Rose via text that she's lost connection. So I will continue on with the Navajo Nation data update in hopes that she can join us here soon. So for our Navajo Nation, again, the difference, there's 14 days from the last time that you've seen this report. And we've had an additional 15,980 is the total individuals that are tested. Out of those, there's 9,650 that were negative and 2,498 positive confirmed cases. Good news is of those who have contracted COVID, there's 3,935 who have recovered. And there has been additional 17 deaths. So continuing to see COVID impact folks. Our Hopi Tribe, they have 2,507 is their total cumulative who've tested positive. Over the last 14 days, there is 174 cases. And when you look over a seven-day period, there is 61 active cases. You'll also see a little bit of a change on their vaccination population. 78, just over 78% of their total population has been vaccinated in the Hopi Tribe. And 79.6 are eligible, who are eligible have been vaccinated as well. But looking again to our Navajo Nation updates, they did have an additional 2,956 samples that were tested. And of those, 47% showed the Delta variant and 31% showed the Omicron variant. When you look at their total vaccination rate for their population, it's just over 64%. And when you look at their eligible population, 74% of those are vaccinated. They are still practicing their safe-at-home requirements. Those have not changed. And their public health emergency order for schools and businesses continue to be the same for the, so it's the red status for schools, the orange status for businesses. So that is exactly the same as Rose reported the week prior, or the, the previous council update. Good news is our health advisory has reduced to 83 communities, still obviously higher than we'd like to see it. But it's good to see that that number is climbing down. And they are continuing to issue their ARPA hardship assistance checks. So terrific that they're able to get that additional assistance. Hopi Tribe, not much has changed here from the update. They continue in phase two of their reopening plan until March 13th, or until we're, we're notified of something different. A new update that was included is that their courts are open now from 8:00 to 3:00 p.m. And we'll be holding hearings as included previously. So those are our updates from our Indigenous nations. Certainly, if Rose is able to join us and there's something specific she wanted to call out, we can turn it over to her at that point in time. The last piece that we have prior to moving the discussion into council is just reminding of the two options we have from meeting formats. I pulled this from our slide where we discussed this back in August. We have our hybrid option, which supports attendance both in-person or remotely, depending on what the council member would like to do, as well as staff, city staff and community members who'd like to participate. And then the last is the virtual option, which we've been doing now for a couple of weeks. Where 100% of attendance is remote, other than our amazing city clerk staff and IT professionals who are in City Hall making sure that all these technology things work so that we can conduct our business. So thanks to them. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor DC. And we're here to answer any questions or provide additional information that you might need.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager, as well as thank you, Rose, for collecting the data that unfortunately tech difficulties are affecting. But aside from that, I would like to open that up to discussion from council. So sees and cues in the chat box. And the primary question would be if we are going to a, back to a hybrid model or remaining virtual will be the, the key discussion point for this evening from council. Councilmember Shumoni has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to sidetrack us just a bit here and I apologize in advance. But Deputy City Manager Anderson, thank you for the presentation. And, and obviously, Rose, thank you for your work on this. Just a quick question, Mayor and Shannon. You know, with the ICU beds still being pretty much full, but yet the big drop-off in cases, I'm just trying to understand myself, what is happening on the ground? Do we know if, if the ICU is being filled with individuals with COVID? If they have Delta versus Omicron? I might be getting into a level of detail that we don't have data on. But I'm just trying to better understand what's going on. Do you have any insights you can share?
I don't. Councilmember Shumoni, you know, when we contacted the hospital previously about the number of beds available, the medical director was really clear that this number changes on almost an hourly basis. If they have somebody who's in need of care, they're going to make sure that they get the care that they need and they're not turning people away. So that was the response, the last time that we had checked in with them to better understand about the bed availability. So hopefully that will help a little bit in answering your question.
It does. And my only follow-up to that is just that, you know, if I recall correctly, you know, maybe a month or so ago before Omicron came, maybe a couple of months ago at this point, that ICU bed level was pretty low. And it kind of rose with the, the wave that we recently experienced from my, you know, recollection. And I do wonder with the data that you're presenting, if it is a mix of Omicron and Delta, and that maybe Delta is driving the ICU capacity needs. I'm not so concerned about them reaching capacity from what you're sharing with us. I'm just trying to understand, you know, because I, I would assume with the drop-off of cases that we're experiencing now three weeks, we'd be at, you know, 20 ICU beds, you know, of the 40, or just something a little bit less. But maybe if we talk further with their director, we could ask a little bit more. But anyways, Mayor, just to get back to the conversation that we're having now. Yeah, I think, I think I'm open to us going back to in-person. I'm curious what other people think. And I guess I'll leave it at that. And I'm curious what, you know, City Manager and leadership thinks about, you know, staff needs and safety. If, if, if staff feels ready for going back to in-person or a hybrid. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Shumoni. I might be able to help a little bit with the data question you had. The thing with the confirmed cases is that the hospitalization rate actually lags that. So you get tested, a lot of people get tested, confirmed, and then it's a few days or a while after that they then become hospitalized. Then there's a lag again on death rates. So as we look at this data, we can see a drop-off with the confirmed cases. And also take into account that individuals who are hospitalized, you know, they can be hospitalized for two weeks, three weeks, et cetera. So there i- is typically a delay in the hospitalization compared to the drop-off in confirmed cases. So regarding, regarding the Delta and Omicron, definitely don't know much about that. And that would take a little bit more detailed info, but we can expect this kind of lag effect that we, we've seen over the last couple of years. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I've heard a couple of questions about, you know, how many of the people that are being hospitalized have been immunized and compared to ones that have not taken the shot. And I don't have any local data, but I did see on the news, it gave some charts of, you know, the number of people, the rate, you know, number of people per 100,000. And the number of people that were in the hospital that were not immunized was way up. And the number of people that were in the hospital that had been immunized was extremely low. The two numbers were something on the order of 50 to 1. So, I mean, what's the message in that? Get, get your immunization shots. At least that's the way I interpret it. Everyone else can interpret that data the same way they want. To the question, I would, I feel comfortable with the hybrid model at this point. I'm open-minded to hearing if the city manager has concerns or whatever. But for me personally, I feel comfortable. I've gotten all my shots, including a booster. It's probably almost time to get a second booster. We'll see. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. City Manager, would you like to chime in with these particular questions?
Thank you. Thank you for the discussion. And it is encouraging to see the downward trends. I think there is a level of comfort with going to a hybrid arrangement here. The hybrid one is one that still affords people the opportunity to work remotely. And we encourage that they continue to do that. And, you know, so it's kind of been what has been the practice anyway. I mean, you probably can see I'm in my City Hall office at, at this time. So I don't see much change from a day-to-day standpoint in that. It's just giving the employees a little bit more discretion, I believe, to come in if they like. But I think there's a level of comfort with doing that. And for those who aren't yet comfortable, we're going to respect that discomfort and allow them to, to work remotely or pursue other avenues to, to try to lessen their risk of exposure. But I think the comfort level has increased. I'd like to hear from Shannon to get her thoughts on this. Thank you.
Thanks, City Manager Clifton. I, I think you're spot on. I think going to the hybrid option allows employees to continue to be at home and engaging in the council meeting, or they can be in-person. We have the technology that supports both. So I believe that we would be comfortable with the hybrid option.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Vice Mayor has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I too am comfortable going to a hybrid option.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Sweet.
I am comfortable going to, back to the hybrid.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Salas.
I would support a decision to, to going back to hybrid format. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Shumoni has a question.
A quick question. Shannon or City Manager Clifton, I guess this question's made for you all. I'm not saying that the entire council needs Plexiglas dividers. I know there's a little bit of a point of contention in our discussions as council, but given that we're sitting in that space for hours, pretty close proximity, let's just say a member of council, myself, would prefer to have a Plexiglas divider. Is that something we can order a few of or a couple of just to have for council members that would prefer to have that? Not again, saying that the whole council needs to do it, but if I were to show up, you know, throughout the rest of the pandemic, that might help me feel better about being there in person. Is that something we can order? Or I can order and bring myself?
We prefer not, not the latter. If, if I may, I think we can look into this. My off-the-cuff suggestion is we, we don't do it for one or two, if either we do it for all the stations or not at all. But allow us to look into it. It might, I want to be respectful of your suggestion, Councilmember Shumoni, but it might be good to hear from the rest of council on this as, as well. I spoke over somebody at the beginning. Was that you, Shannon?
Yes, Greg, I was just going to say that we would probably need to look into how we would be able to install something like that if council was supportive of the idea.
And Mayor, a really quick follow-up. You know, I, what I saw when I did a click Google search, I think I actually like saw on Amazon or just somewhere online, like I think they just stand on the tables. They don't like bolt in or anything like that. They're really easy to pick up and put down kind of thing. And City Manager, to your point, and Mayor, yeah, we can have that broader conversation, but I don't, I'm not trying to pressure council members to, to like, you know, put those up and deal with those if they don't want to. I guess I was trying to find a way for me to set myself up for success in a way that I felt good about without implementing, you know, the rest, or, you know, just, I don't know, whatever you want to say, encouraging others to do the same. But Mayor, I'll let you take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Oh, sorry, Deputy City Manager.
Yeah, Mayor DC, if I may, just, just a little reminder that we do still have the mask requirement in place. And so individuals who are in City Hall would be wearing a mask when they're in the building. And so there's that level of protection as well.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Councilmember Assam.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think it's fine to go back to the hybrid format at this time. I also do want to, you know, I said this before, and I will start beating this drum pretty regularly at this point. I'm waiting for the CDC recommendations to update, but as soon as they do, I am going to be Waiting for the CDC recommendations to update, um, but as soon as they do, I am going to be comfortable with. Uh, the city moving back up through our COVID mitigation strategy ladder. And that includes uh, taking away the mandate to wear a mask indoors. So I don't think we're going to be at four um, for a majority on that at at this time, or maybe in the very near future. But this is a conversation I'm willing to have, and it's it's a touchstone I'm going to keep coming back to. I don't think uh, mask wearing or Plexiglas for that matter. Um, is going to be useful moving forward as we rise up out of this pandemic. Uh, long term. Uh, we need to start thinking about not being in a pandemic anymore. And uh, personal safety measures that people want to take. Folks should absolutely be allowed and feel comfortable taking reasonable measures to protect themselves, including mask wearing moving forward. But I don't think we need uh, in short order, I don't think we're going to need to be mandating mask wearing. In our in our indoor spaces for much longer. So I'm just going to keep repeating that, and we'll see how long it takes. Um, the majority of council to catch up with that idea. But uh, as an early adopter of most technologies and most ideas, um, this is where I'm at, and uh, just want everyone to know. That my comfort level here runs the whole gamut. We could keep meeting virtually if folks want. Or we can go all the way up to being in person without a mask on. I'm totally okay with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Assland. I will just say that um, we have followed CDC guidelines since the very beginning. And I don't think it's any, there's any reason to now change that at this point. I look forward to the updates, but the most recent update from the CDC. Was doubling down saying that in schools, for example, K through twelve, that masks should be required. Um, remember that what we do also reverberates through our community, through other government entities. It should show signals to our tribal neighbors. And we need to be mindful that our actions do have uh, effects on others. Personally, I'm not interested in even discussing the lifting of the mask mandates within city facilities. Until we move to the high transmission, or sorry, the substantial transmission as opposed to the high transmission that we still remain. Um, I'm very uh, much optimistic, given that the trajectory is going downward. But do recall that even at this rate, we are still to the same rate as we were in December. Um, at as as an absolute number. So we'll we'll continue to do that. I'm will, I I think we should all, and. I know we will continue to monitor and see where CDC guidelines are, but I see no reason to. Um, after almost two years, start to different, start to divert from uh, what has been recommended. So, that's where I stand on that. Aside from that, in terms of the council meeting format, um, I am. All for a hybrid option at this point. And uh, regarding the uh Plexiglas. I I don't feel that's necessary at this time to as an expenditure. Um, we do have KN ninety fives and ninety five masks available, and um, the comparatively, when you look at. CDC guidelines regarding, for example, the face shields with the Plexiglas, et cetera, are not uh, shown to be as effective. Nearly as effective as ensuring that we're wearing proper and um. Um, high grade masks, which uh, w- will be the. Number one deterrent as uh, sitting into a council chamber. So. That's where I'm at with that, and I do believe we have proper direction on the primary. Uh, question of this COVID nineteen update, unless anything else needs to be clarified by um, city staff.
Thank you, Mayor DC. We have our direction.
Thank you. That brings us to agenda item nine, which is our appointments, and nine A is the consideration of appointments for our indigenous commission. And that would be, computer's loading for um, that is, that would be council appointments first by council member. Councilmember Assland. So, Councilmember Solis.
Well, thank you, Mister Mayor. It is my honor. To uh, appoint, to recommend appointment, the reappointment of Ms. Fontoya. To the Indigenous Commission for a term expiring December twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Uh, and I just got notice from um. The city clerk Salzburg that I missed the council liaison reports, so we'll just kick that until after the appointments. And we'll do the council liaison reports uh, afterward. So my apologies for uh, skipping that on the agenda, but uh. With that, we do have a motion uh, for appointment of Fontoya by Councilmember Solis, seconded by Councilmember Shimonie. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any? Thank you. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Fontoya, for your service. Uh, Councilmember Assland, you have the next appointment.
Yes, I did. Thank you. Um, I would have uh, met um, recommended Ms. Toya as well, had that not already occurred. But I am also very pleased to be able to recommend Dara Marx uh, to the Indigenous Commission.
Thank you, Councilmember Assland. I will second that uh, appointment motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously, and I would like to say particularly looking at this uh, these applicants. Thank you, thank you for all of the interest in our Indigenous Commission. We had eleven applicants for these two positions. Um, you know, these were not, I'm sure, not easy decisions on appointments by Councilmembers Solis and Assland. I'm just really grateful to see so much uh, engagement by the community, uh, particularly for our Indigenous Commission. Uh, with that, we are down to, yeah, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Assland. Uh, we're down to the appointment for the uh, Board of Adjustments. And that would fir- for first uh, be an appointment by myself, and I would like to nominate. Uh, Diane Lorden. For the um, appointment to the Board of Adjustments.
I second that, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Any further discussion?
I I do.
Yes, Councilmember.
So, this is kind of interesting. I just uh, as the person who's going to go third here for an appointment recommendation. I don't want to jump the gun, but I I do want to point out uh. This uh, subtlety here. Um, two of the four. Nominees or applicants, I should say, uh, for the Board of Adjustment, of which there's going to be three appointments today. Uh, two of the four work for the same employer, Levin Contracting. And I don't know how that, uh, I don't know if that matters or if it should matter. Um, I do think it's interesting. Uh, it does feel a little bit like there's a potential of of stacking our Board of Adjustments with employees from one contracting agency. Uh, I just want to bear that in mind as we move forward through the appointment process here. Uh, and so. I don't know if this is the proper place to mention it, or if I should have waited till it was my turn, but um. That consideration is in play at this point. I just wanted to bring it up. Thank you. I'm. Yeah.
My apologies if you continue. All right, well, uh, yes, thank you, Councilmember Assland for pointing that out. It is important for the community to know. Um. Uh, the individual backgrounds, I will just note that um, uh, when it comes to um, Ms. Lorden. Uh, I am particularly interested, and the reason for my uh, appointment is the civil engineering background. And I think with that level of scrutiny and detail would be uh, the experience that warrants. An appointment to the board. So just so, just so everyone knows where I'm coming from with that particular appointment. Um, I do see Councilmember McCarthy has a comment.
Yeah, another concern, if you have several people from the same company. On the Board of Adjustment, if there were a conflict of interest because of that company working on a given project. Uh, they, we might miss out. We, you know, you might not even have a quorum, and because it might be that several people would have to recuse themselves. As far as background, you know, I have a lot of respect for engineers. I am one. But, but on the other hand, I think the Board of Adjustment. I think probably like planning and zoning and land use issues is probably just as important. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, and I I will note, um, you know, council can uh, move to delay in a. The appointments for this for more applicants if they so desire. Um, that's still on the table, so. Uh, just note that there are options other than appoint or not appoint at this time.
Thank you for pointing that out. That was on my mind. I'm not sure if it's necessary. Uh, we can let this play out a little bit further here.
Thank you, Councilmember Assland, and with that, there is an appointment on the table. Um, for Diane Lorden. Um, seconded by.
Seconded.
Oh, seconded by Councilmember Assland. Yeah, sorry, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Solis had already seconded that, sorry. Um, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Uh, with that, we are to Councilmember Solis for the next appointment nomination.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. It is my honor to recommend the appointment of Mister Art Abbott. To serve on the Board of Adjustment with a term expiring May twenty twenty four.
I'll second that.
A motion by Councilmember Solis, seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are now to Councilmember Assland for the next um, nominee.
Thank you. So based on the way things have fallen out here, I I do want to avoid putting two people on the board. Uh, on the commission that are uh, employees of the same contracting company. Um, I do think that Deborah Lewis uh, is qualified to do this work, and it's nice to have a landscape designer uh, involved. Um, someone who's working with landscaping agencies here in town. So I I think we have qualified alternative applicants to move forward right now. I don't think we need to delay this for more applications. Um, we'll see if uh, there's three others that agree with that. Um, but for now, I would, I'm very uh, comfortable in nominating Deborah Lewis to be on the Board of Adjustment.
And I will second that.
I think.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Those opposed? That motion carries. We are down to the appointment now for the Commission on Diversity Awareness. Um, there are two appointments and four applicants and.
Sorry, tran- transportation.
Oh, my apologies. Geez Louise. Jumping right ahead.
Probably doesn't matter, but.
Yeah, well, we have tra- okay, so we have Transportation Commission, uh, which has one appointment to a term expiring July twenty twenty three. And two appointments uh, expiring July twenty twenty four, and five applicants according. Um, the the first uh, council appointment assignment is to Councilmember Assland.
Thank you, and it is with enthusiasm that I would like to recommend Brendan Khrushenko to a term expiring in twenty twenty four.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Shimonie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sweet has the next appointment.
Thank you. I would. Like to nominate Joe Koenig to the Transportation Commission with a term expiring July of twenty twenty four.
And I'll second that. Thank you.
I have that seconded by Councilmember Shimonie. Uh, all those in favor? Or any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Uh, Councilmember Solis has the last appointment for the Transportation Commission.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. It's my honor to um, recommend the appointment of Jonathan Hanson. With a term expiring July twenty twenty three.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Shimonie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Now, we're down to the Commission on Diversity Awareness, of which Vice Mayor Daggett has the first appointment.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to move to reappoint Jean Toner to. A term expiring September twenty twenty four.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Shimonie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carries unanimously. Uh, Councilmember Sweet has the second appointment.
I would like to nominate Marcelo Pino to the. Um, sorry, Diversity Awareness Commission with the term expiring September twenty twenty four.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries unanimously. We are now down to agenda item ten of our consent items. And I.
Do I need liaison reports?
Liaison reports will become before that, and we will uh, go to the council liaison reports. To um, let's start in roll call order, so uh, Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you all may have heard of a little thing called the Housing Plan. Which is going to be presented to council, I believe, today. Uh, so that's my update on as council liaison to the Housing Commission. And um, in terms of the Northern Arizona Municipal Water Users Association. Uh, I just wanted to let you all know that in addition to the the tracking and weighing in on bills having to do with water that. That we've instructed staff to do, that NAMWA is also tracking and weighing in on bills having to do with. Water and um, its availability to municipalities. So that's my only update. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Assland.
Sure, just real quickly, I mentioned this last week. Uh, the reason I was not able to join the group at the Lone Tree Overpass Tour. Was that I uh, it was helping to chair a meeting uh, for a new working group called the Rural Rural Groundwater Working Group. Um, there's a bunch of folks around the state who are very concerned with the way groundwater policy is going at the state capital. So, we got together and just started talking. There were no decisions that came out of that meeting. Um, there was some. Uh, we we did a bit of a deeper dive into certain bills that are of concern. These are bills that we haven't really been talking about in terms of our own state legislative priorities, so I wasn't really able to weigh in. Um, very strongly uh, or able to commit further support to what's going on there. But at some point, uh, it seems to me that it makes a lot of sense that opposition to these bills would be supported by council. Of course, I don't want to presume that, and we need to follow the the procedures and protocols for these sorts of things. So just keep an eye out for some future um. So just keep an eye out for some future conversations and discussions around some groundwater, rural groundwater policy. And it was, it was a really neat meeting. There were mayors and council members from many different communities all throughout the state. It did not fall in any particular lines you might expect. And it was a nice eclectic group and it was a nice way to connect with some other policymakers all throughout Arizona. There's a deep concern about the way we're treating our water in the state of Arizona and that showed up loud and clear during this meeting. Further conversations will follow and I'll keep you guys updated about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin. Councilman McCarthy.
Nothing today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis.
Nothing specific to report for today, but an announcement sharing information that the State Transportation Board is meeting at the the council chambers on Friday at nine o'clock and that's all, it's, that's ho- hosted by Metro Plan Greater Flagstaff and the City of, Metro Plan Greater Flagstaff and the City of Flagstaff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. The CJCC Executive Committee Group met last, I want to say it was Wednesday, three to five P M. And we talked about a number of things, including an update on our coordinator hiring, which is underway and continues to search for the right person. And then we spent a good amount of time talking about the felony case backlog and and how to better function as a judicial system here in Coconio County. And that conversation will continue and I look forward to diving into that deeper. I just want to remind you and the community and everyone that these meetings are open to the public. You're able to tune into any of these if you choose to. And our next meeting, which is going to be with a full CJCC, rather than the Executive Committee, is March ninth, and I'll remind you all when that's closer. But other than that, just grateful to the, to staff and to my fellow colleagues on council for joining the Lone Tree site visit. I think that was very helpful to be there and walk it with you all and with staff, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. Get my camera on here. Let's see, the BPAC Commission has an open vacancy. And I do want to thank Jeremy Slater for all of his service on this commission. He did a great job and I look forward to seeing who who applies and and gets on the commission next. We did look at the twenty twenty three work plan, including the airport, the Aspen Pet and Bike niche that will be downtown next to Pay and Take, the forestry and Locket Roundabout and the Downtown Connection Center. Tomorrow I have the Mountain Line Board Meeting and Thursday the Water Commission Meeting, so a busy week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. I don't have any updates at this time, though, and I I will in a couple of weeks as we have the Flagstaff Housing Authority Board Meeting on Thursday, as well as the Inclusion Adaptive Living Commission next Tuesday. So with that, we will move right along here to our consent items. We do have five on the agenda this evening. And we'll welcome any motion to approve all or to pull any out.
Mayor, this is Jim McCarthy. I move to approve all of the consent items, ten A through E.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That, those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. That brings us down to agenda item eleven of our routine items. Eleven A is the consideration approval of contract. The Cooperative Purchase Contract with Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated for the purchase of specialized fire and safety equipment not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars per budget year. Staff recommended action is to approve the Cooperative Purchase Contract Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated for the purchase of specialized fire and safety equipment not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars per budget year. Deputy Chief.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mark Wilson, Deputy Chief of Flag Fire. Today, we do not have a presentation on items eleven A and eleven B as they're really simply administrative requests. The contract agreement before you allows us to make purchases either through cooperative agreements, government service agreements, and both of those ensure that we have the best pricing for equipment needed in a very short turnaround. That's one of the big requirements. And more specifically, why we're requesting approval is to allow the fire department to purchase large numbers of equipment that go with our academies. So when we hire large groups in our academies, it exceeds the current fifty thousand dollar limit needing to go to council. And when we order this protective equipment turnout specifically, it takes two to three months to make from the time that we place the order and they're all built to each new hires' specific measurements. By approving the contract, we would no longer need to hold off the additional two to three months it typically takes to get the equipment in service for our members and once they're out of their twelve-week academy. Now, obviously, we would not purchase any equipment through this contract that hasn't been approved through the normal budget process. So that's all we wanted to represent, and that's for both items eleven A and B. Is there the same contract, different vendors? And myself and Ms. Emily Markle from Purchasing are available for questions.
Thank you. With that, I am moved to approve the Cooperative Purchase Contract with Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett.
I have clarification. That includes the authority of the city manager to execute all necessary paperwork. Is that correct?
That is correct. That that is included in the motion. So thank you for the clarification. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? The motion carries. Brings us to agenda item eleven B associated, which is the consideration approval of contract of cooperative purchase contract with Ellen Curtis and Sons for the purchase of specialized fire and safety equipment not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars per budget year. I move to approve the Cooperative Purchase Contract with Ellen Curtis and Sons for the purchase of specialized fire and safety equipment not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars per budget year and to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents. Have a second. Seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Deputy Chief. All right, that brings us down to agenda item third, oh, sorry, twelve A. This is the public hearing consideration and adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh three. In ordinance of the city council, the city flagstaff amending the flagstaff zoning map to rezone approximately two hundred ninety-nine point six eight acres of real property generally located at nineteen hundred North Gemini Drive, A P N one oh one dash three seven dash zero zero two J, one oh seven dash oh one dash oh oh one F, one oh seven dash oh one dash oh oh one G, one oh seven dash three seven dash oh oh one E, one oh one dash three seven dash oh oh two H, one oh one dash two eight dash oh oh seven E, one oh seven dash oh one dash oh oh one B and one oh one dash two eight dash oh oh seven C and a portion of A P N one one zero dash zero eight dash zero zero one G and one oh nine dash oh two dash oh oh one S from the rural residential public facility and research and development zones with a resource protection overlay to the public open space zone with a resource protection overlay, providing for separability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date. McMillan Mesa Natural Area Concept Zoning Map Amendment, P Z dash two zero dash zero 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 six three. Staff recommendation is to hold the public hearing, read ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh three by title only for the first time. All right, Ms. Fairtry.
Yeah, good afternoon. I'm Mayor and Council Genevieve Para Three, Senior Planner in the current planning section. I'm here to present this case. I'll turn my camera off while I'm presenting. Just go ahead and share my screen.
And I would like to open the public hearing. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. So yes, this is again the concept zoning map amendment for the McMillan Mesa Natural Area. So an overview of this request, it is from the City of Flagstaff Open Space Program and it is to rezone about three hundred acres, two hundred ninety-nine point six eight acres to be exact, located at nineteen hundred North Gemini Road. The requested zoning is public open space with a resource protection overlay. The current zoning is rural residential public facility and research and development with that resource protection overlay. And the area consists of undeveloped land distributed across ten parcels. There are trails and utility infrastructure that do crisscross this area. And the purpose of this rezoning request is for this area to be managed by the City of Flagstaff Open Space Program as the McMillan Mesa Natural Area or M M N A for the purposes of open space and passive recreation. And those are the only uses allowed in the public open space zone. As I mentioned previously, it's located approximately nineteen hundred North Gemini Drive and there are ten parcels. So they're really located north and south of Forest and Cedar Avenue, as well as south of Gemini Road. And we can see that, yeah, the parcels are primarily contiguous and some of them, only part of the parcel is included in this request. So for example, this one right here, but total, they all, together they total three hundred acres. So here's some history about this, the McMillan Mesa Natural Area. So on November eighth, twenty sixteen, eighty percent of people who voted, voted at that time, voted in favor of Proposition Four thirteen. So this proposition restricted the use of approximately three hundred acres of city-owned property to public open space and passive recreation, thereby creating the McMillan Mesa Natural Area. And just again, this is all City of Flagstaff owned land. However, the proposition did not change the regional plan land use categories for this area, nor did it change the zoning. On October sixteenth, twenty eighteen, the city council approved a major regional plan amendment and that updated several maps in the regional plan. Two of them were the Future Growth Illustration, which it shows different land types throughout the city and it also updated the Road Network Illustration Map, which shows, yeah, obviously the road connection. So the purpose of this update was to make the regional plan consistent with the Proposition Four thirteen and the creation of the McMillan Mesa Natural Area. So again, this request is approximately three hundred acres. There were ten parcels. I mentioned previously, there's actually two parcels that are partially included in the request. So for example, one of the parcels contains Buffalo Park, the U S G S, and those areas of the parcel are outside of the rezoning area. All the parcels have a resource protection overlay on part of the parcel or all of the parcel. And again, there's existing trails and utilities in the site already. However, no public systems analyses were required because no new development is being proposed. Again, the public open space zone only permits two uses, which is open spaces and passive recreation. And then this table at the bottom of the slide just shows the change in the zoning map. This is approved. So going from public facility, rural residential and research and development zoning to open space zoning on these ten parcels. So there are two types of zoning map amendments. The first one is if you have, well, not actually developing anything in this case, so that wasn't appropriate. If you have a site plan, you do that first and then go to council. But since nothing's being built, this case is a concept zoning map amendment, which allows the applicant to submit a concept plan and then pursue site plan approval after rezoning. There's no site plan for the site, nothing's being built, so hence the concept plan was the most appropriate or concept zoning map amendment, excuse me, was the most appropriate application for this zoning map amendment request. So there's been quite a bit of citizen participation for this request. So as required by code, the City of Flagstaff Open Space Program held two virtual neighborhood meetings in December twenty twenty and January twenty twenty one. The public participation report that summarizes these meetings is attached to the city council item. The City of Flagstaff Open Space Program also held a sixty-day public comment period on the Flagstaff Community Forum. That was not required by code, so they did go above and beyond with that respect. Then on January twelfth, twenty twenty-two, the Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this rezoning request and voted five zero to recommend approval of the requested conditions. And the public comments associated with that P and Z hearing are also attached to this city council agenda item. So here we are today, holding our first public hearing for the ordinance first read and then the second read is currently scheduled for March first. So that's two weeks from today. So there are three findings for zoning map amendments. The first is that the proposed amendment must be found to be consistent with and in conformance with the goals and policies of the general plan and any applicable specific plans. So I mentioned previously, there was that regional plan amendment in twenty eighteen to align the regional plan with the McMillan Mesa Natural Area. So the map right here shows all this area in green. The regional plan shows that it's parts of open space, which is consistent with the zoning map amendment. And this map over here, the road, a road was removed right here to make this consistent with McMillan Mesa. So this is what it looks like now, showing no roads here, so that is consistent with the proposed rezoning. Also, in the narrative prepared by the City of Flagstaff Open Space Program for this rezoning, it identifies thirty-two supporting regional plan goals and policies in several categories, including environmental planning, open space, community character, growth areas and land use, economic development, neighborhoods, housing and urban conservation, recreation, transportation and water resources. The applicant narrative also identifies eight regional plan goals and policies that do not support the rezoning and growth areas and land use, economic development and transportation. That's because the rezoning to public open space reduces employment and housing and transportation options in this area. However, the regional plan amendment in twenty eighteen addressed many of these issues. And one way, one thing that came out of that regional plan amendment is that as the regional plan is updated, starting later this year and next year, it's proposed to identify land for housing and business parks to offset reductions associated with the previous regional plan amendment in this rezoning case. So five of the ten parcels are also covered by a specific plan, so that's the McMillan Mesa Village specific plan. The public open space zoning would be consistent with a specific plan for three of the five parcels. That's because one of the parcels is designated as a school or park in the plan. And the other two parcels are foot connectors that bisect areas that already are in conformance with that plan. However, there are two parcels, if they have public open space zoning, that will not be consistent with a specific plan because they're designated as a business park. However, Proposition Four thirteen, as well as the major regional plan amendment, already identified these parcels as open space and they're limited in their future use and sale by Proposition Four thirteen anyway. So at the time of that planned amendment in twenty eighteen, it was decided that not to update that McMillan Mesa specific plan. So the second finding for approval is that the proposed zoning map amendment must be determined to not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience or welfare, and it also has to add to the public good as described in the general plan. So staff does believe that this proposed rezoning will not be detrimental to the public good, health, safety, convenience or welfare, and that it will also add to the public good, as discussed in the project narrative that is attached to this city council item. So in summary, the McMillan Mesa Natural Area will protect a Montane grassland, which is an at-risk ecosystem in Flagstaff. It will be the city's largest park. It will be managed by the City of Flagstaff Open Space Program. It will preserve views along the Forest and Cedar Avenue corridor. Will also provide neighborhoods with access to exercise opportunities in the outdoors, provide opportunities for outdoor education for all of the local schools that are around the McMillan Mesa Natural Area, and then provide multimodal transportation options via those existing trails that bisect the natural area. The last finding for approval is that the site must be physically suitable in terms of design, location, shape and size Um, shape and size of the proposed project, um, and provision of public emergency vehicle access services and utilities. Uh, to make sure that the requested zone designation or uses or development will not endanger. Jeopardize or otherwise constitute a hazard to the property or improvements in the vicinity of the property. So, um, as I mentioned previously, there's no proposed development, but this project did go through the inter-division staff review. Which did conclude that it was suitable for open space and passive recreation, those two uses allowed in the public open space zone. And this conclusion was based on the review of all applicable codes and requirements. So in summary, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission believe that the proposed concept zoning map amendment. Is in substantial conformance with the required findings for approval. As such, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend, in accordance with the required findings. That the city council approve an amendment to the zoning map for two hundred and ninety nine point six eight acres. From the rural residential, public facility and research and development zone to the public open space zone with the following condition. Which is a resource protection overlay, or R P O, shall be applied to all areas contained in this rezoning. That I have prepared for my formal presentation, but I'm happy to answer questions. Uh, the City of Flagstaff Open Space, uh, folks are also here, so. They're available as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Para Three. Um, before we get to questions, is there any applicant, uh, uh, presentation associated with this?
Uh, there's, I do not believe there is.
Yep, I, I, that's why I assume, given the circumstance, it's a little different than most public hearings. But before we go to, uh, Qs and Cs, have to follow the public hearing order. Um, with that, Councilmember McCarthy does have a question.
Thank you. Are there any parts of this land that are up for rezoning tonight? That were not included in proposition four thirteen?
I believe the two foot connector parcels were not included, but, um, Robert, do you want to go ahead and answer that question?
Sure. Good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council. Robert Wallace, Open Space Specialist for the City of Flagstaff. Uh, Genevieve is correct that the two foots parcels. That connect, uh, McMillan Mesa over to Cedar were not included initially in proposition four and three. But that was included in the regional plan amendment. And so we did follow suit with that and included it within this rezone.
That answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Um, any other questions from council at this time? Uh, with that, I do understand we do have some, um, public participants and happy to have them jump in at this point.
Good evening, Mayor. Our public participant for this item is Mr. Tyler Denham. Tyler, if you could please go ahead.
Hey, councilmembers, this is Tyler Denham, speaking today as a private citizen. I think you mostly know me as a advocate for housing affordability. And, and some places, there's a stereotype that proponents of greater urban densities like myself. Want to turn everything into a concrete jungle, but that's far from the truth. Though I primarily advocate for urban density on housing affordability grounds. I also support it because it frees up more land for community amenities like the McMillan Mesa area. And I'm confident that you guys can work towards greater housing affordability. While preserving this really gorgeous area for future generations to enjoy. So for that reason, calling today to support the rezone. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Appreciate it. Uh, next public participant?
Mayor, that is all the public participation on this item.
Excellent. Well, with that, um. Uh, we'll open it up for council deliberation and if there's any other questions to, uh, staff. Before we close the hearing. Councilmember Salas?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, Mr. Wallace. I have, um, a question for Mr. Wallace, our open space, um. Is it manager? Our open space specialist. I don't wanna, uh. Uh, miss, misidentify your, um, um, title with the city. So anticipating the, the adoption of this, this ordinance. Um, do we, do we have the, the staff, available staff resource? Uh, to maintain and protect. This vast areas. And if not. Today is the, um. Best day to think about potential budget requests for, uh, additional staffing. So we can have, uh, a highly effective open space staffing. And that also, um, is a recommendation to our pros, um, uh, division head, uh, Mr. Rebecca Sayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Salas. Uh, I really appreciate the question. Uh, we have been managing the properties since the passing of proposition four and three as an open space property. We are, we do have a small budget, um, of thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars and we are working with the budget team. This season to put in a request for an increase to our base budget to help us manage this property and our other open space management. Our open, other open space properties. And we also will be working with the budget team to put in a request for a, uh, second F T E position. So we hope that those will be successful and will help us to be able to manage these properties.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Uh, Councilmember McCarthy, if you'd like to, uh, make your comment before we close the hearing and, um, uh, provide a motion.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to comment on Mr. Denham's comment. And I think he's right on. I think there's a place to save some open space. And then have some higher density, uh, in other parts of the city. I mean, this has worked extremely well. Look at New York City. It's like the highest density you can see anywhere. But they saved, uh, Central Park. And so this kind of makes sense in the same way. So I am supportive of this. And, uh, I don't know if you're ready for a motion. I could do that now or wait?
Uh, if you'd like to wait, uh, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Shumani have comments and we'll need to close the public hearing beforehand.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Daggett.
This will be quick. I just want to thank staff for all of your work on this, as well as all of the citizens that have, um. Worked on various, um, aspects of open space on McMillan Mesa. And, um, that's it. I just want to say thank you. I know that, that getting these materials together to bring to us today. Took, um, a good amount of work and I'm appreciative. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shumani.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments are similar to Vice Mayor's. You know, I, I just want to express gratitude to staff as well. Um, this has been a long time coming and I also want to express gratitude to the community, obviously. Uh, this is, you know, was a ballot initiative. I, I remember this because I, myself and Councilmember McCarthy ran in twenty sixteen, so this was very much at the forefront of a lot of our discussions. And it's just kind of, uh, amazing seeing how things go from an idea. To a signature collecting process, to the ballot, to, and then years later to this point. And, uh, just really humbling to be a part of that process and I'm excited about this, uh, this discussion tonight. And I agree with, with the, the speaker Tyler and Councilmember McCarthy in regards to. We protect open space so that we can infill better and serve the community the best we can. Um, and I just felt like I also should just give, um, Ms. Celia Barrett's a shout out for her leadership and hard work on this. I don't know if we'd be here without her really championing a lot of this with a, a handful of key people. So, um, just big, big, big win for everybody and, um, humbled to be with you all tonight approving this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumadi. Uh, with that, I'd like to close the public hearing and Councilmember McCarthy, I think, has a motion.
Well, I have a comment and a motion, but, uh, Mr. Shumani just stole my thunder. I wanted to, to publicly thank Celia Barrett's for her leadership on this issue. And there's other people obviously too, but, uh, as a former council member, I think her weight on this, uh, really helps. So I, along with Mr. Shumani, want to thank her publicly. So, all that said, I move that we read ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh three by title only for the first time.
I second that. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Carries unanimously, City Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff zoning map to rezone approximately two hundred and ninety nine point six eight acres. Of real property generally located at nineteen hundred North Gemini Drive. A P N one zero one dash three seven dash zero zero two J. One zero seven dash zero one dash zero zero one F. One zero seven, zero one, zero zero one G. One zero one, three seven, zero zero one E. One zero one, three seven, zero zero two H. One zero one dash two eight dash zero zero seven E. Ones, one zero seven, zero one, dash zero zero one B. And one zero one dash two eight dash zero zero seven C. And a portion of A P N one one zero dash zero eight dash zero zero one G. And one zero nine dash zero two dash zero zero one S. From the Rural Residential R R Public Facility, P F. And Research and Development, R D Zones with a Resource Protection Overlay, R P O. To the Public Open Space, P O S Zone with a Resource Protection Overlay, R P O. Providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections and establishing an effective date.
Woo, that was a mouthful. Uh, with that, uh, City Attorney has a comment?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council and, uh, City Manager Staff. I just wanted to point out, um, for clerical, uh, corrections as mentioned by, uh. Uh, City Clerk Salzburg, uh, the final comment that was made by Councilmember McCarthy. I know you weren't aware of that, Mayor. Technically, it should be included in the minutes as part of the public hearing. Um, and then the motion was not part of the public hearing. I just wanted to make sure that was clear for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Uh, with that, we are down to Agenda Item twelve B, but before we get into this. I think it might be good to take a, a little bit of a break. So, um, let us meet at, uh. Uh, give us fourteen minutes, so that will bring us to five P M sharp. Uh, we will get back at it before going into our residential sustainable building standards. So I will see you here while now in thirteen minutes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
City Clerk, uh, make sure we got enough of the crew back here.
I would just ask if maybe our councilmembers could just note in the chat really quick if they're back, um.
Or, or thumbs up. I like thumbs ups. All right, we got four at least here now.
We're good to go.
Good forum, uh, start the live stream if it's not already on.
Mayor, we are good to go.
All right, we are down to Agenda Item twelve B. Uh, this is our consideration and adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero five. And ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero four. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Coquenino County, Arizona, declaring as a public record. That certain documents filed with the City Clerk and entitled P Z dash twenty-one dash zero zero two eight two. Updates to zoning code, residential sustainable building standards. And an ordinance of the City Council of the City Flagstaff, Coquenino County, Arizona, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title Ten. Flagstaff zoning code to modify the existing residential sustainable building standards. I'd like to, at this point, open the public hearing and turn it over to Ms. Neiman.
Thank you so much, Mayor Deasy. Uh, give me one second while I share my screen. There we go. Good evening, Mayor Deasy and City Councilmembers. Jenny Neiman, Climate Program Manager. I am joined today with Tiffany Antol, my esteemed colleague in community development, uh, who has been a key part of this process. I want to warn you before I start, my slides are slightly different, uh, than those that were in your agenda packet. Uh, we wanted to add a little bit more to, uh, the version that we used just to provide a touch more clarity. So today, I'm gonna go over the background for, uh, these standards. Uh, why we're here, what's the motivation for change? I'll then talk through proposed changes. Uh, we'll go through one by one, but on each section of, uh, the exhibit you have before you. With the actual changes to the text and then the staff recommendation, which Tiffany will walk us through. First, I really want to start us off just, um, with a note towards our title. While these are called the Residential Sustainable Building Standards, uh, this is an incentive program. And, and so I think that's just really important to keep in context, um, despite, just because of the section of the zoning code they're in, they are under standards. But, uh, this is a voluntary incentive program, um, that developers can participate in if they would like. So just for a little bit of background, the existing incentive or the standards in the code. Uh, developers of new residential buildings can earn a density increase or a density bonus on their property. If they comply with the requirements of this incentive, they can get up to a twenty-five percent density increase. There are four categories of requirements spanning water, transportation, waste and energy efficiency. The energy efficiency requirement, uh, is really the, the core requirement there and it's what this incentive has been historically based on. And it requires buildings achieve a HERS fifty rating. The HERS system is a national rating system that rates energy base or rates homes based on their energy consumption. The HERS scale goes from zero to one hundred. One hundred is the average home that is built. And so our HERS fifty is fifty percent more efficient. In terms of motivation for change or why we're here today, um, the first is, is really simple and this is really the core motivation. Um, in some ways, this is an update that is in some ways a maintenance update. Um, our building code has gotten closer and closer to this incentive and the requirements of this incentive over time. Uh, we've had this building or this incentive for more than ten years. And when we updated our building code, which we do every about six years, but particularly when we updated in twenty nineteen. Um, we, we got a lot closer to the requirements of this incentive. So this incentive requires, uh, E V readiness or laying the sort of electrical infrastructure for development. Um, our code now requires that. And in terms of energy, so the current incentive, as we said, requires HERS fifty. HERS sixty-one is what is required, um, through some compliance paths of Flagstaff's building code. So that's pretty close and getting closer. Um, again, that's the base level. We need all buildings to be at HERS sixty-one. And so, um, sixty-one's pretty close to fifty. Um, another motivation is that the incentive is, is not used very often. I believe it's only been used maybe three times. Um, in the ten years that it's been around, more than ten years. And so we want to make it so that it's more used, more well-known. Um, you know, we want to incentivize sustainable building. Finally, the incentive competes with the incentive for affordable housing. Um, that is because the current code, or sorry, the current incentive, because it's so close to the code, it's actually fairly easy to achieve. And so, um, our housing folks have, have, you know, noted that there is a conflict there. Well, if people can just get the sustainable incentive really easily, then they don't have as much sort of incentive to get the affordable housing incentive. Um, finally, the incentive does not reflect the priorities of the Carbon Neutrality Plan, um, or really our first climate plan from twenty eighteen. Um, particularly the Carbon Neutrality Plan specifies the need to incentivize building electrification and efficiency. And I'll talk a little bit more about that at the end. Now I'm gonna take us through the specific changes. Um, this is kind of a summary. So the first is, as I said, the energy efficiency standards. We're gonna move away from HERS fifty. And we're gonna replace that with requirements for all electric energy efficiency, eh, energy efficient buildings. Um, this means, this will mean compliance with one of three energy efficiency requirements, which we'll go into detail. This is the core change and the one that's probably the most significant just in terms of compliance. Um, and you'll see why. We'll talk a little bit about this, but we're moving away from HERS generally because it doesn't, um, pair very nicely. pair very nicely with all electric buildings. And so we're trying to sort of open up the floor to have other standards that pair up slightly better with electrification. We are also going to incorporate requirements for electric vehicle charging. So that's different than electric vehicle readiness, which is in the code, which again is the electrical infrastructure. We're revising our requirements around waste. And then we are specifying essentially how we get to this agreement. And this is essentially sort of the mechanism of how this happens. When the developer participates in this incentive, it's through an agreement between the planning director and the development. So now to detail, the proposed amendment, so the purpose, the first section here, we've updated it. We've removed references to the HERS 50 standard. And now we're just aligning it with proposed revisions. Again, our focus here is really energy and resource efficiency. What's up the density bonus? So before you could get a certain number of your units to be HERS 50, and then you would get a sort of proportional density increase. We've removed that. That means removing this table. This simplifies it a lot. This means the text is a lot simpler, and frankly, the entire amendment is a lot simpler. Now it's you must comply with the requirements, and then you get the 25% density bonus. In terms of our minimum standards, so we have water, transportation, and waste that are sort of the the other minimum standards before you get to energy. In terms of water resource protection, we didn't do a lot here. We kind of clarified that it includes all buildings within a residential development. In terms of transportation and air quality, we, so there used to be three sort of options that you could take to comply with this section. You could be located within one quarter mile of a transit stop. You could provide electric vehicle readiness, the electric infrastructure. Or you could be within one quarter mile of a foots trail. Because our foots trails are pretty prevalent around town, they're not necessarily good signifiers of where we want buildings, right? It doesn't sort of indicate a great location for buildings, particularly denser buildings, as well as a transit stop, right, which is on our permanent transit network. And so what we did was we talked to Martin Ins, our multimodal planner, and we actually removed the ability to be near a foots trail. And so now there are just two options. So the first is the same, within one quarter mile of a transit stop. And now the second one, we've sort of upgraded that. So you must provide EV charging stations as opposed to just readiness. This is really important. Multi-family housing is a challenge for electric vehicle charging. And so as we see the vehicle fleet evolve over the next five years and the coming decades, we want to ensure that our multi-family housing has EV charging. We want EVs to be accessible to everyone eventually. And so we want to make sure that our housing is built for the future. And so this is one way that we're really excited about being able to incentivize getting those EV charging stations in. Finally, waste reduction and management. This is also an area where we have simplified the code. There were a number of sort of confusing requirements in there. And now what we're asking for is we're asking for a materials management plan. So this is during the ongoing operation of the buildings. And we're asking for a construction and demolition waste management plan. And so we will work with the developer to make sure that they are submitting that satisfactorily. And then really, this just ensures that they're planning for recycling both during construction and demolition, if it's applicable, but also during the ongoing operations of the building. So we feel really good about the simplification here. Finally, getting into the energy. So energy efficiency and all electric, that's the name of the game here. Again, I mentioned before, we're removing the requirement for HERS 50. Again, HERS doesn't play extremely nice with electrification. And so what we're trying to do is, is offer three pretty different options, to be honest, but that all achieve pretty good results. So the first is an all-electric zero-energy building. This is the hardest, but we know that there are some places that may try to do this. Zero-energy building is defined by the Department of Energy. And so what we're asking for here is it has to be verified as zero-energy building by a third party. There are third-party raters, you know, all across the country nationally that go by our national standards and verify buildings for future performance. And so this takes the pressure sort of off of our building safety team to really take in that third-party certification for that. The next one is all-electric energy-efficient building. So we will ensure that the building is energy-efficient by certification to the bronze level of the National Green Building Standard. This is another national standard that has third-party certifiers. It also will be constructed to achieve energy efficiency that's more, 15% more efficient than our current code. So we know that there will be a significant improvement there. This option does allow an exception for, let's say, a gas fireplace or another sort of small gas usage on the property. This does need to be approved by the sustainability director, where the developer needs to really indicate that it is a very small amount of emissions. Finally, an all-electric building that qualifies for triple certification. So the EPA provides three levels, three types of certification. Energy Star is very well-known. It's for energy efficiency. Indoor Air Plus is about air quality and health. And then finally, Water Sense. Water Sense for Homes 2.0 is a really great standard. And it has a checklist that we're going to follow. We are not going to require the certification there just because there are not verifiers. There's not a very well-known or a lot of verifiers in Flagstaff that can do this. And so to make it easier, we will do the checklist sort of verification ourselves. So those are the three options from an energy efficiency standpoint. Excuse me. So this is what I referred to before. This will allow the planning director to enter into an agreement with the property owner to comply with program requirements and obtain a density bonus. This is really just how this happens. And then finally, we added a definition here. EVSE stands for Electric Vehicle Supply Equipment. It is a Department of Energy's definition just for EV charging. And we wanted to make sure that was really clear. EV charging stations, excuse me. That is different again from our code, and so we needed to add this new definition to the standards. Finally, I want to talk about Carbon Neutrality Plan alignment. Again, we're really updating these standards because they needed some modernization and they needed some, you know, pulling up to where we exist today. But it also gave us a great opportunity while doing this sort of timely update to incorporate many different strategies of the Carbon Neutrality Plan. So I'll run through these fairly quickly. EcoDUAL Systems. This is just because we are removing that conflict or sort of competition with the affordable housing incentive, which is being worked on, decreased dependence on cars. So this is really about where we want our buildings to be, right? That relates to locating along a transit line. It also relates to appropriate density, right? We want to reward sustainable building with appropriate density. We know, as y'all just discussed, that density can be really great for a lot of our goals. Electric mobility. So this is supported by getting more chargers in multi-family housing. Clean electricity. So clean electricity isn't necessarily specified here. But to get to actually any of those three energy efficiency standards, you can incorporate renewable energy installations. And so we anticipate that this will help to further clean electricity. Excuse me. Building fuel switching. So news buildings. We want to encourage new buildings to rely on the electric grid. This one's pretty simple. It was written, knowing that this standard would be updated fairly soon. And again, we have limited ability in terms of requiring new buildings to rely on the electric grid, but we can certainly incentivize it. And this is really our main tool to do that. Finally, reduce energy use. And I want to just clarify, these two things really go together. So fuel switching, so building electrification has to be paired with energy efficiency. And that's what we've tried really hard to do in the energy options. We don't want to have folks fuel switch over and then have really high electric bills, right? For the folks actually living in their homes. And so pairing these two together and requiring the energy efficiency standards with the building electrification is a really critical component of this incentive. Finally, sustainable consumption and waste management. We think that we'll have a lot better success in terms of the clarifications that are offered here, and we will divert more waste from the landfill. Now I'm going to turn it over to Tiffany Antal.
Thank you so much, Jenny, for that amazing presentation. So today, I'm going to go over the last little bits of this zoning code text amendment and the requirements that need to be met in order to approve a text amendment. And that includes the three findings that you see on the screen. The first finding is that the proposed amendment is consistent with and conforms to the objectives and policies of the general plan and any specific plan. Staff has determined that the amendment's primary purpose is to implement the regional plans, goals, and policies related to the production of energy and resource-efficient residential buildings. Therefore, the proposed modifications are intended to incentivize developers by providing a density bonus for developments constructed in conformance with these proposed provisions. So there are several goals and policies that are listed in the staff summary. I can go through them in more detail. And of course, as Jenny has already noted, the proposed modifications also assist in implementing the City Council adopted Climate Action and Adaptation Plan and the Carbon Neutrality Plan. Finding number two, the proposed amendment will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare. The amendment provisions are not anticipated to be detrimental. The proposed provisions are intended to provide efficient residential buildings that minimize a development's overall energy, air, water, and waste material environmental impacts. And finding number three, the proposed amendment is internally consistent with other applicable provisions of the code. The benefits of having a house with windows. And so lastly, that's the third finding here. So staff has found the application to be in conformance with the three findings. And in addition, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended by a vote of 5-0 in accordance with these findings to support this text amendment. And if you should have any questions about the process, we'd be happy to assist you. I do have one measure of note. As we have answered questions in regards to this application, one of the things that we've noticed is that the term incentive is not in the title. And that may, that may help folks understand better that these aren't standards applied to every development, that these are really an incentive. So staff would suggest a last-minute change of changing the title of this provision to residential sustainable building incentive.
Thank you, Ms. Antal and Ms. Neiman. With that, question, comments, and suggestions as per the slide. But just want to note, as this is a public hearing, there's no applicant presentation or any particular applicant necessarily in this circumstance.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, just want to make sure we're doing the whole protocol thing before Sterling jumps in. With that, then, we are open to questions, comments. I do see Councilmember Aslan has a comment.
Yeah, Mayor, did you want to take her public comment first? I'm fine with that, either way.
Yeah, that would be good before we get fully into it. So Ms. Salzberg, you are welcome to queue them up.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Mary Norton, you may go ahead and unmute yourself and address Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will make this brief as a follow-up to my previous public comments to planning and zoning and my email to all of you on this matter. I ask you, why would new sustainable building code standards give options to lower the energy efficiency ratings by deleting the high level of energy efficiency resulting from a HERS 50 rating? Additionally, some of these options are lower levels of energy efficiency than builders are already building at. Secondly, I ask you to consider the ramifications of this generous 25% density increase bonus that will be exempt from triggering high occupancy housing. Again, this is lowering the guardrails that have already been put into place. And if that verbiage is removed, resulting in the density bonus triggering higher, high occupancy housing, it should be clear that a Prop 20, a Prop 207 waiver should not be allowed to be considered with this bonus. I'm also concerned about what a development would look like after using this density bonus and double-dipping with affordable housing incentives. While the intent of these revisions might be to offer flexibility, these amendments are too loosely defined, providing too many loopholes. So often, the general public sees a new development and asks, how did that get here or who approved that? Usually, the answer is zoning or code allows it. This is exactly how that can happen. And the trade-off of an electric building that might not be held to the highest standards of energy efficiency will not be well-received. I encourage more work in detailing on sections 2 and 3D before this moves forward. Thank you for your time and consideration of these concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. Other public participants?
Mr. Tyler Denham, if you would like to unmute and please address Mayor and Council.
Hi, council members. This is Tyler Denham. I support the intent of the zoning code update. I think it's a nice policy to nudge developments towards greater sustainability. So I'm calling today, as a private citizen, to make just one comment about it and ask two questions. The comment is, I do wish that the density bonus was a little bit more generous. Greater urban density is in and of itself more environmentally sustainable. However, I was not part of the previous zoning meetings, so I feel that I've sort of forfeited my right to push heavily on this. But I do want to make that comment that I think the density bonus could be more generous because density in and of itself is more environmentally sustainable. As for the two questions, first, is there any plan to check in a few years from now and verify that the policy is being used? My concern is that if the size of the carrot, which is the density bonus in this case, isn't balanced to the cost, no one will use the policy. And it's so hard to know beforehand what exactly that balance should be. So I think it prudent to intentionally set a check-in a few years from now and verify that the policy is working and being used. The second question I have is, I'm curious if the 25% density bonus also increases the parking requirement for the development? Because that would undercut the value of the density bonus if the developer then has to find a bunch of extra land for the parking. So just curious how that works. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Ms. Neiman or Ms. Antal, would you like to take a stab at addressing the questions that Tyler presented? Ms. Antal?
Yes, thank you so much. So absolutely, zoning codes are meant to be checked in on, on a regular basis to make sure that we've got it right. It's so hard to know in advance if we got it right. And Tyler brings such a good point, which is making sure the checks and balances are there, that the, the cost of the incentive is not outweighing the benefit of the bonus. So yes, we are so open and amenable to having regular check-ins on this incentive. The second is in terms of parking. So this incentive does not relieve the developer from meeting the parking requirements. However, if they were to take the affordable housing incentive, that's where they could then see some parking incentives come into place there. So we didn't want to go the full rein of the housing incentive because again, we wanted to try to balance the benefits from one incentive to another.
Thank you, Ms. Antal. And I would like to also thank you Vice Mayor as well to address Ms. Norton's questions regarding the HERS and how that plays in in terms of the level of environmentally, environmental restrictions compared to the benefits as well, which I think is the heart of our considerations tonight.
Of course. Thank you, Mayor and Council. And thank you, Ms. Norton, for your comments. They are certainly very good comments and things that we have thought a lot about. Ms. Norton is right. So with HERS 50 right now being the requirement, some of the ways, so
some of the ways, so net zero energy, you're pretty much out of hers zero, right? Is you're, you're using net zero energy in your home. So that's how that one would compare. But the other two requirements, so Energy Star as well as the National Green Building Standard, they do have higher than hers fifty require sort of equivalencies. Again, as I said before, though, because of building electrification requires a real rethinking of the building, it, it kind of makes the hers comparison a lot harder. And so it means that we, we, what we have done is we've said, yes, if Energy Star, you know, requires, let's say a hers fifty-eight or fifty-seven, we are okay with that because it also will be paired with building electrification. I will also say that the National Green Building Standard requirement as well as Energy Star require a lot more than simply hers, right? Hers at the end of the day is, is really just a, a rating system that speaks to the total energy use of the building. And so by being in the National Green Building Standard system or the Energy Star standard system, you actually are seeing a lot more well-rounded requirements in some ways, instead of just that hers figure, which is really again, just a comparison to that baseline score one hundred home. So absolutely, we, we, we have thought a lot about that. But because again, it's coming with an all-electric building, there's, there's just kind of a different ballgame when we think about energy efficiency.
Thank you, Ms. Neiman. And just to clarify then, it's the, the hearse scale then is really about the energy use, not where that energy is coming from.
That's correct.
Okay, so I think that's a, a, a good point of clarification for the public because I also get real mixed up with the hearse and the Energy Star. And there's so many caveats and ways to scale this that I, I appreciate the commentary. Councilmember, Councilmember Aslan? Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, do I just need to check with Ms. Salzberg? Was there another public participant?
Mayor, there are no other public participants on this item.
Thank you. Then we will kick it to Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you. So I think we should use non-gender pronouns. Jenny's laughing.
I almost didn't get it.
Anyway, moving forward, what I, what I wanted to touch on, and I can be pretty brief. I actually think this is really exciting. I'm super excited about it. I think it's a great note to hit. I think it's the right balance at the right time here. I think it's a great idea to revisit this, make sure it's working and maybe even tweak things and calibrate things a little bit. You know, what I love most of all about this incentive is that typically, at least, at least from my perspective, when you see incentives, you're sort of allowing someone to do something bad if they do something good. And what we have here is sort of, this is an additive effect, right? It's not a canceling out effect, which is really neat. We're, we're asking for, we're providing for better density, which just makes, it, it makes sense in terms of a lot of goals that we have here in Flagstaff. I don't think there's any accident or any coincidence to the fact that we're talking about this. And in short order, we're going to be talking about the ten-year housing plan. You know, we have a climate crisis, we have a housing emergency as well. And we're looking for ways to make these things not, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul. We want, we want these things to be synergistic. And what we have here is a, an incentive program that synergizes all of our goals. So I'm really excited about that. We're getting people to think about energy use in a different way, reducing energy, getting our energy differently. And their reward for doing that is more density for infill and more units to help solve our housing crisis. So those are the points that I just wanted to make right now. I think that this is a wonderfully synergistic approach to a variety of problems and challenges that we're facing and, and tackling here in Flagstaff. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Other members of council? Comments, questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Tiffany. And our commenters. Can you, this might be a better question for Tiffany. Tiffany, can you address the claim that was made about high occupancy housing? Again, I, I'm, I'm I'm trying to wrap my head around how, how this impacts high occupancy housing or vice versa.
Yes, thank you. So when the original incentive for this program was developed, it had not contemplated high occupancy housing. We had not yet adopted the code for high occupancy housing. As you know, high occupancy housing sets particular density standards in terms of overall units and bedrooms before requiring a conditional use permit. There are so, there are several other locations and where density limitations are set. We talk about density limitations in terms of our regional plan categories. We talk about density limitations in each zoning category between medium density and high density residential as well. So for a long time now, we have not applied incentive bonus density to those maximum caps, whether it be on the regional plan, whether it be on the maximum density allowed in the zone. And as clarification, since HOH is brand new, we've clarified that we won't, we won't, we won't count it against a project becoming high occupancy housing if a developer should choose to use the incentive policy.
Okay. So the two things would never meet on the same, on the same project, right? You, you could either be receiving this bonus or we would be applying high occupancy housing, depending on the density of the project.
Yes, but technically you could be both. I mean, you could hit high occupancy housing and then use the density bonus on top of that and go through the process of conditional use permit. I mean, we would work with any applicant to, to do that. But it doesn't mean that just because you use the incentive and you get the bonus density that that automatically we're now going to take you through the conditional use permit process or limit you to certain areas of the city.
Okay. Now, let me make sure I have, I think I have two more questions. I want to make sure I'm clear. If you add the affordable housing incentives and sustainability incentives, the total density bonus you could receive is seventy percent. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And Jenny, so how do I, how do I ask this? I mean, obviously, this is better than what we're currently requiring, right? That's why you're bringing this to us. So this, you're anticipating this resulting in more energy efficient projects than what we currently offer as an incentive.
So we are anticipating that the projects that come out of this will have, be more well-rounded from an energy standpoint. So they will be all-electric buildings, which is a really critical part of the carbon neutrality achievement. And they will also be efficient. In terms of, you know, comparing efficiencies between the ones who were right now, we're getting hers fifty and ones right now that may go through this incentive. They may by the hers rating be less energy efficient. But when we look at it from a more well-rounded level of their total energy use, we do feel that there are more energy efficient, they're using more efficient fuel. So more efficient heat pumps, for example. So it's not exactly a straight answer, but yes, you're, you're on the right mark. They will be electric and efficient.
Okay. One more question. Would it make sense to break out residential from multifamily projects? Because it seems like they're very different.
To date, the only projects we've used this incentive on have actually been multifamily. We haven't had the end, the, the majority of the incentive is really written for multifamily. And we have yet to have anybody apply this to single family. In fact, overall, in terms of density, we have a much harder time using bonus density on residential, single family anyway, which is a whole different conversation for a different way. So I, I don't usually end up working on, on single family residential using a density bonus. Hope to fix that and change that coming in the future, but baby steps. And then I think as we can work on the residential, single family component, then we can go back and calibrate this. We've also had suggestions along the way to try to calibrate this for commercial development as well. Of course, density would be the bonus.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's it for now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Schmone?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Jenny and Tiffany for your work on this. Very exciting incentive that we're discussing tonight. And I guess my only comment, it's just in regards to, to parking. I know we're not really talking about parking and, and, and that really in this conversation and this incentive. But I do see value in, in addressing that at a later date somehow in regards to incentives and also in regards to the ten-year housing plan that outlines it as a policy point to, to further investigate. So a lot of overlap in our discussions today on today's agenda, but very supportive of this incentive. Thank you for the presentation, Jenny. And I very much support Tiffany, the language being changed of the name to include incentive. And Mayor and Council, I hope we all give clear direction for, for, for staff to continue to do that just to create that clarity with the community and development community and all the different individuals and partners that are going to be looking at this incentive and, and just kicking it apart and evaluating it and weighing out its pros and cons. I just think it's really important that we have that clarity upfront in the name. I think that's all I had. Thank you all for your work on this and I'm looking forward to seeing this move forward. Appreciate it.
You, Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you. I'll start with a question. Jenny, you mentioned that you're going to change the title of minimum standards. And I didn't get your exact wording, but something to minimum requirements to receive incentives or something like that. Other than that, and, and you also mentioned that you changed some of the view graphs that we just looked at. But the text of the actual proposed amendment, that hasn't been changed with the exception of that one title. Is that correct? It's the same as we saw in the packet.
Yes, that's correct. My changes were really just for the PowerPoint.
Okay. Just thought I'd clarify that. I've got a lot of comments. I wrote them down ahead of time. There's really two categories of comments. Some are substance that, that we can debate back and forth, you know, with you and the, the council. And some are just nitpicky typographical things. And I did send those to staff. And I was told that rather than just give them to staff, that I should bring them up. So even though they're nitpicky, if I want them, I better talk about them. So here I go. So let's go to ten dash thirty dot seventy dot zero four zero. I want to add a couple of words there. Right now, it says to qualify for the density bonuses established, blah, blah, blah. The development must meet requirements of the four following areas. So I just wanted to clarify that they have to meet all four of those. I think that's the intent. So I would change that to read to qualify for the density bonuses established in section ten thirty seventy thirty, density bonuses, comma. The development must meet the requirements of, and add these two words, each of, before following areas. I think that's just a matter of clarification, not of change. Okay. Now I want to go to table ten dash thirty dot seventy dot zero four zero. This is on page three, incidentally. So that's dot zero four zero dot B dot one. And that's a, a table that says how many charging stations they need to add. And this is something that, yeah, thank you. So where's that table? There? No, that's not it. There it is there. Okay. So over on the right-hand column, it has the numbers one, two and three. I suggest that those be like one, four and six. In other words, what I'm saying is I think we should require more electric charging stations than what's in the draft. I don't know if we want to talk about that now or if I should just keep going and let council members come back to my points to see if they agree or disagree. But that's my suggestion. All right, still on page three. This is under ten dash thirty dot seventy dot zero four zero Charlie, in other words, C. And this seems really nitpicky, but in the third line, add a comma after the words or designate, just to make it read better. And then add a comma after materials management plan. Because in that sentence, there's two, the word and is used twice. And when you use the word and twice in one sentence without any commas, it could be subject to misinterpretation and confusion. So that's a nitpicky one. I hate to waste council time on it. Okay. Now probably my more, and I apologize for my next comments because I think we've actually touched on some of these. I mean, the way this was presented, at least the way I took it, was that in all cases, we were going to be requiring a more stringent energy requirement or efficiency. But, and now what I hear from Jenny is that, no, we're not doing that. In some cases, we're going to accept a less efficient energy. But we're going to get all-electric or something else. So maybe that's okay. But I'll just go through my comments. I would have edited these down probably, but I didn't have time sitting in the meeting. So I'm now in ten dash thirty, incidentally, this is on page four. Ten dash thirty dot seventy dash zero four zero D, option two, all-electric, energy-efficient building option. So I'll just read what I wrote. My understanding is that bronze level certification within the National Green Building Standards is equivalent to approximately hers fifty-nine. Understanding that the higher hers rating is less efficient, the proposed requirement is to get the incentives, to get the incentives is less energy efficient than the existing requirements of hers fifty. I question why we would lower the requirement. And I stand by that statement. There seems to be some disagreement about the validity of this, which we can debate. But actually, I don't think that's true. I think staff is now admitting that the proposal is for a less efficient energy standard. But the reason they're doing that is so that we can assure all-electric. So maybe that makes sense, maybe it doesn't. In option two, AII, it calls for a fifteen percent improvement over the current energy code. So my question is, does that apply to insulation, to furnaces, to air conditioning or what? I guess what's really apparent here is that I don't thoroughly understand all these different ratings. And I have a hunch that there's probably nobody else on council that does either. And I also question if it's appropriate for council to approve something that it doesn't really understand. So maybe it would make sense. So maybe it would make sense over the next week or so. That we get a tutorial on what all these things mean. And what their significance is so that we can understand them and then have a rational discussion as opposed to this hand waving. All right, I'm almost done. In option two, B, I, it would allow or outdoor natural gas fireplaces. Now, these are basically for decoration. They're not for heating anybody up or anything. If our goal is to reduce consumption of carbon fuels and their emissions. I suggest that we not allow this exemption in the incentive policy. And from what I understand, that same comment was made by someone on the Planning and Zoning Commission, but it didn't go anywhere. But I'm suggesting it again. And then my last point. This is under option three, A, I. It would allow an Energy Star certification to qualify for the incentive. My understanding that this is lower standard than the bronze level certification with the National Green Building Standard. And lower than the HERS fifty requirement. I guess I really just don't know if I buy into reducing the energy efficiency requirements from the existing code. If we're trying to make progress, why are we backstepping? And I think what you're going to say is that, well, because we'll get all electric. And I admit that has some value. So overall, I'm very supportive of this uh, proposal. But I had a whole series of questions there and I'd be interested if staff has any answers. Or if other council members have any comments. I'll leave it there for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. I'll, I'll uh, start with staff on that front.
Thank you, Mayor Deasy. Thank you, uh, Councilmember McCarthy. Thanks, Councilmember McCarthy. I understand that um, these can be a little bit confusing and so I really appreciate you digging in. Um, I, I want to reiterate, it's um, the, the comments are correct, right? That from a HERS measurement standpoint, um, that they are less efficient on the HERS rating scale. Um, but I want to reiterate that the National Green Building Standard requires many other things than the HERS requirement does. As does Energy Star. Um, and you'll see that in both option two and option three. So option two, um, I, I was glad you pointed out um, a fifteen percent improvement over our current energy code. So this is building energy efficiency. So that's her whole building. That is essentially what the HERS standard rates on, um, is whole building. And so a fifteen percent improvement over our current code, our current code again is at about sixty one. A fifteen percent improvement gets you to fifty two. So in some ways it's a HERS fifty two and it's all electric. Um, but again, the HERS standard is, is just really made for buildings that are also running on gas. Um, and so it, it's just a, a completely different sort of calculation. Um, if that makes sense in terms of thinking about efficiency with gas furnaces. Um, versus thinking about the higher electrical use that you get when you're running on heat pumps. Um, and when you're running on electric hot water heaters. And so that's why, um, it does put you into a different sort of realm of electric use. And it does hurt your efficiency in some ways, um, because it is all electric. But again, um, the way that the HERS system calculates it, it kind of in some ways penalizes you for that electrification, if that makes sense. So, um, yeah, I just want to reiterate, it's, it, we think that this is a much more well-rounded standard. Because now instead of just one metric of HERS, we're now using these national uh, building standards. Energy Star is really well-known, really verified, has a ton of um, success across the country. And of, of municipalities using it across the country in order to get energy efficiency. Um, and again, we are also asking for, um, if you do Energy Star, that you also. Um, make sure that you are doing the water sense mandatory checklist. Um, so we're getting water efficiency there beyond again, just the HERS requirements. We knew that water efficiency and energy efficiency are really closely tied to each other. Um, just because our water is so energy intensive. Um, and then as well as on the option A, um, sorry, on option two, A. Um, you know, the National Green Building Standard, as well as the requirement that it's a fifteen percent improvement over code. Um, we feel that we're pretty much there, um, in terms of energy efficiency and holding the line. I'm not sure if I didn't answer any of those other questions, um, I'd be more happy.
All right. So what we're saying is that we're willing to accept a slightly less efficient system. If we can make it all electric because, and I'm kind of adding in here. Because uh, electric energy has the potential to be uh, produced by um, environmentally friendly sources like wind turbines or, or solar arrays or whatever. Where natural gas obviously does not. So I, I think that's part of your point.
Absolutely. Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
I was just gonna say, that is the whole basis of building electrification, right? APS has committed to a one hundred percent uh, carbon free electric grid by twenty fifty. And so if you build an all-electric building today, you will have a building that is running on carbon-free electricity in, in twenty fifty. Um, and so that's really exciting. The electric grid is getting green and greener every single year. Um, already with our current electric grid, um, all electric appliances are, are significantly. Um, more sustainable, have way lower carbon, um, than natural gas appliances. With Arizona's current electric grid today.
All right. And then some of my ideas aren't interpretation. Are there, I mean, issues like, well, how many charging stations did we have? That's subject for debate. There's not a right or wrong on that. All right, I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you, Mayor.
You, Councilmember McCarthy and uh, Jenny and Tiffany, I did want to bring up one thing where, that uh, uh, Councilmember McCarthy did mention, which was the exemption for gas fireplaces outside. Could you, could you uh, provide the reasoning for that uh, within the code?
Yes. And so, um, this is, I, I want to be really clear. This is um, fireplaces in common and shared use areas. So this is not just outside. Um, and part of the rationale here is that we heard from developers that they wanted to be able to have this amenity. Um, and, and to be able to do that particular in one development that has all, we've already um, been in conversation around. And I think Tiffany can expand on that. But um, yeah, it's, it's really just a basis of, um, you know, folks saying, you know what? We really just want it for this one reason. Um, and so what we have, um, if what needs to be approved by the Sustainability Director is a calculation that this isn't really going to lead to significant emissions, right? And that, um, you know, it's not thirty different gas fireplaces. It's really maybe one in the common area. And at the end of the day, it's really a marginal um, emissions use at the end. You know, we want folks to be able to participate in this incentive and for them to not be turned off. Um, just if they can't have their gas fireplace, if that makes sense.
Gotcha. Uh, Tiffany, do you want to jump in on that front?
Yes, I mean, it, it's exactly as Jenny said, uh, we are trying to work under parameters of existing development agreements. We've already uh, worked on, this could also potentially include, you know, if there was a pool, a gas heating for the pool. Um, but again, it would be at the discretion of the Sustainability Director to ensure that it's really a limited use on site. Um, and that it's not exceeding uh, what, what would be beneficial to the property.
Thank you for the explanation on that. Uh, uh, just to, to throw in there, um, on top of Councilmember McCarthy's uh, comments. More EV chargers, I, I am in agreement with. We're seeing that, you know, likely over, uh, in the coming years, over ten percent already of all um, new vehicles purchased are electric vehicles. So this just sets us up for success. Um, on what the demand will be like in the very, very near future for EV. Um, and, and these types of developments. Uh, so with that, I will go to Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. Thank you both for your work on this. It is, is very exciting. Um, I did have questions on how this would work with our housing emergency, but I, I definitely have a better understanding. So thank you for going over that in detail. Um, I definitely believe that we should add the word incentive to the title. I, it, that definitely sets the stage for what this actually is. And I think that the checkups are going to be crucial. Um, and even, I don't think we should wait years for the checkups. I think this should, this should be something. Uh, we keep close tabs on how it's working. And I'm wondering with the electric grid going so green, does it make sense to try and add solar into this conversation?
I'd be happy to respond, um, if that's all right, Mayor Deasy.
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Sweet. So we, we didn't specify solar and, and you're right, right? Solar would contribute to um, the furthering, right? Of making our grid cleaner, um, and lower emissions. We chose not to include solar here just because we in a lot of ways were keeping with the original structure of the amendment. Um, sort of in the spirit of making this an update, we tried to kind of keep it under energy efficiency. I do believe that, um, particularly so if a development chooses to go with under energy efficiency, option one, a zero energy building. They will have to incorporate solar to get there. Um, and so that was sort of our play for solar. And you know, some buildings do already, right? And so a building may say, yes, we're going to go for zero energy, right? And this is what we want to do. And solar um, is a huge part of that. And so, um, we decided to kind of leave it open for the other two options, just to leave flexibility. Um, you know, we've heard a lot from, you know, view sheds and, and trees, and they're already dealing with a lot on the site. Um, all buildings in flex F U have to be solar ready based on the code. And so they will have that, um, meaning hopefully would you be just a little bit more. But we wanted to leave it a little bit flexible here, um, while staying fairly true to the original structure of the incentive.
Thank you. And my last comment on the charging stations. If we don't revisit that now, I definitely feel like that should be something in the near future that we talk further about. Um, I mean, it's just the wave of the future and I think setting us up for success. This will be part of that. So thank you again for all of your work on this. Exciting.
Thank you, Ms. Santal.
Yes, I wanted to say, you know, it does make sense to change out the numbers of the charging stations to be more even. Um, since once charging station can be set up as a dual to start, to serve two. So if we were to change, you know, going to two, four, and six, rather than maybe one, four, and six. Um, just a suggestion, but keeping it in that even number, I think also gives the developer more flexibility in having the dual charger.
Thank you. And um, with that, uh, Vice Mayor, or sorry, actually, Councilmember McCarthy did have a follow-up. Uh, regarding the prior comments before we go to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is going back to the gas um, fireplace thing. You know, I go over to a restaurant called Wildflower Bread Company. And they have a fireplace outdoors and it just roars all the time, even when nobody's out there. And I just think that is such a waste of energy. Um, on the other hand, I can understand that, you know, a little flexibility. To make this more palatable to developers, you know, like in a fireplace in a common area. That's shared between a whole mess of different apartments. So that may seem reasonable. Now, I also heard a comment about heating swimming pools. Is there anything in this code that would allow you to, with this incentive, that would allow you to use gas to heat a swimming pool? I didn't see that. But I need, I'll probably read this two or three more times before I'm done with it.
Um, Ms. Neiman, yeah, feel free to jump in.
Sure. Thank you, uh, Councilmember McCarthy. So right now as it is um, written. So it specifies fireplaces and outdoor grills. That was what we heard about the most. We do have other uses that do not significantly increase the carbon emissions. So we have thought, talked internally, it may be a swimming pool. Again, we will want to just look at um, the actual output of that, right? And is this significant? And so, um, I don't want to say right now, yes, it would be a swimming pool, but that could be something that someone would submit for. Again, we would need to really look at, um, you know, is it a really significant use? Are there other options, et cetera? As, as you said, we're trying to include that flexibility. Um, I will say I am not very well versed on swimming pool heating. Um, I imagine like the rest of the world, it is electrifying, um, but I'm not sure if it's there right now. Um, and so again, we wanted to leave it open to, we'll do the calculations, right? We'll take a look at this, um, when we get there.
Well, two comments. The first comment is, uh, and I might have just missed it, I'll admit that. But I didn't see any wording in there that would allow for things like that. I saw fireplaces and outside grills. I didn't see anything about any other uses. If I'm wrong, great. Uh, I, I'll reread it. My other thought is that heating a swimming pool in this environment uses a lot of energy. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
And, and Jenny has highlighted the section where it talks about other uses that do not significantly increase.
Okay, I'll get my magnifying glass out and I'm not kidding. Whoa, it, it went away. Bring it back. Jenny, can you bring that back?
I can try to reshare.
Yeah, B, uh, I, I, right there.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Uh, Vice Mayor?
I see it, sir. Thank you.
Okay, so I have several other questions. And um, I watched the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting twice. Uh, and still have these questions. And so I really like Councilmember McCarthy's suggestion. That we receive some um, additional information, a little tutorial on all of these different elements. I would ideally like to have that um, before we even have the first reading of um, of this. Now to my questions. Waste reduction. Um, so this calls for a plan. And um, I just want to clarify, make sure I'm correct. There's no way to require um, anything in sustainability terms around waste reduction, correct? I mean, we're preempted from state, by state statute?
So what we have done through these plans, if we've asked for the plans to specify how they will um, actually divert different types of waste. And so we are able to do this through, because it's an incentive, it's not a requirement. Um, we are able to say so for in the construction and demolition. We ask for the development to talk about how will you, if you're doing demo, right? How will you deal with your lumber? How will you do, deal with your gypsum? And so that is sort of where we're requiring in some ways the pre-planning of those different things. For the actual materials management plan, which is ongoing, we are asking for the developer to plan for um, recycling of the common materials that we recycle. So plastics, um, aluminum and paper and carpet. Almost forgot them. Um, and so, um, we are actually able to do that by asking for the plan because it is an incentive program.
Okay, thank you. Um, back to high occupancy housing, uh, Tiffany. So um, as I, I mean, I, I think that student housing was the impetus. If, if I'm, um, please correct me if I'm wrong, for hi- the high occupancy housing plan. And so um, the public was very concerned about the number of the, the bedroom to bathroom ratio. Because we were seeing those student units, um, with the common kitchen and common living room. But one bedroom for every bathroom. Could, could a developer build something that would be considered student housing? With this incentive, with the bathroom to bedroom ratio?
Thank you. So let's think about this in terms of overall density. So if a project uh, under their existing zoning is entitled to fifty units. Then the density bonus that they could achieve through this would be an additional, basically it's twelve point five. So we're thirteen units because we do round up. Those thirteen units wouldn't go towards calculating whether or not the project is high occupancy housing. It would be the fifty units. It would be the fifty units we would be making that determination on. If in those, there's different ways that you can also trigger high occupancy housing. One is by exceeding twenty-nine dwelling units per acre in certain categories. And again, it can depend on which zoning category you're in and what you're trying to get to, or a certain number of bedrooms. In terms of bedrooms, the bedroom density, I've not found it to really catch a lot of projects. The standards that tend to catch projects are the size of the units and numbers of bathrooms. This doesn't necessarily apply to those standards. So if in those fifty units, they are all five bedroom, four bathroom, or five bedroom, five bathroom units, they're gonna trigger HOH on those fifty units alone, right? It's not gonna be the additional twelve and a half that's gonna trigger high occupancy housing. So I don't want you to think that because we're giving them twelve and a half more units, that that does away entirely with all of the HOH standards. It does not.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I'm wondering whether this has been considered by the Sustainability Commission and the Housing Commission.
So Jenny did take this item forward to the Sustainability Commission. We did not take this item to the Housing Commission.
Okay, and, and the Sustainability Commission recommended passing it?
Yes, they did. They voted unanimously to pass it.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't see that in the documentation. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. My question, primary question really is about the the accountability with these units. So as we talk about all these energy standards, that's in the planning phase. What really is the enforcement and follow-up with this? Because, yeah, once you give a density bonus and they build it, you can't exactly take that away. And I know from prior developments that we have had in the city. And I'll give you, you know, I think we all know from about, I don't know, fifteen years ago, when somebody decided to take a chainsaw to a bunch of trees for a particular development that I will not state. Or Sterling might get in trouble with, might get in trouble with. But that, a lot of times, we see a situation where the enforcement mechanism, well, we've already given all the incentives. And now, they didn't live up to the bargain, but now we are in a situation where we can't exactly say, okay, we're gonna take that back. I'm wondering what kind of accountability measures or enforcement measures that may be associated with this that can help us ensure that we're getting our end of the bargain.
Thank you, Mayor DZ. So I can start from the energy perspective, just to fill out a little bit of how we, we do that. And as well as the sustainability requirements. So, the developer will be required to essentially fill out a form or sort of report saying, this is how I'm complying. These are the options that I've chosen, right? There are a lot of different options for compliance in here. So that'll be the first step. We will then verify internally in each stage of the development review process, right? So we'll be able to look at it at the site plan submittal, right? And understand if they are putting in natural gas, right? For instance, that's where we'll also look at the landscape requirements, et cetera. And then we'll also keep that sort of sheet through the certificate of occupancy until that review to give that C of O. And so what we'll, what we do in the meantime is we would need to get their verification of their energy and of their predicted energy usage. And this isn't perfect. We have heard comments that, well, how do you verify it? Well, what we have to do is the, the developer has to model out the exact future performance of their building, right? They actually have to do this for our energy code. And it's, it's, you know, we do this for certain parts of our energy code, so we know that it works in terms of we as well as municipalities across the country rely on the system of energy modeling, right? To predict future results. And what the reason, part of the reason why we're also relying on third-party certification is that those third-party certifications are national standards that get updated with technology. They also think really hard, their experts think really hard about how do we make this standard so that this future energy modeling works, right? So that we can understand how this works. And so that's just it from the energy perspective. One final thing I'll say is that the property also will have a flag on it in our sort of internal development system. And so if for some reason later there was a flag that says, hey, they're now installing, right, natural gas, for instance, we have that flag, and we would need to go back to that development agreement, look at it, and understand what's actually prohibited on that property. I can maybe pass it to Tiffany to round this out from her community development perspective.
Sure. So Jenny covered, you know, all the way up through pre-planning, construction, certificate of occupancy. And then ongoing is, is that we do have a permit tracking system. We are able to tag parcels that fall under certain categories. Or that need to do certain things in order to fill, fulfill the requirements of their development agreements. We also have some amazing people in the city of Flagstaff that just throughout, that help us track all of the amazing things that we put in development agreements to make sure that we're living up to all of those requirements, right? Because oftentimes they can fall outside of the zoning code. In addition to that, should all of those things fail and somebody takes a chainsaw to a tree, we have a zoning code enforcement process. And in, in such the cases like that where property owners are fined, they, you know, they can have charges brought against them, there, there is an enforcement case. We don't like to call it enforcement in our world. We like to call it compliance. Because our goal is all about getting compliance rather than getting enforcement. So you can see that most of our efforts are put towards getting properties to be in compliance and stay in compliance rather than, than focusing too, too hard on the enforcement stuff. We do have tools to get there. It's not our favorite place to be.
Certainly, and I can, I can understand that. I just remember that particular case where to live up to it, they were supposed to be planting trees to replace those that got cave down, or taken down. And it didn't seem to ever actually happen. And honestly, this, this is a number of years ago, and I know we've developed as an organization and have filled in a lot of gaps. We've also had situations like twenty years ago where certain numbers of handicap parking that were promised in DAs were not actually fulfilled in very important parts of town. And I just want to make sure that we have the enforce, uh, compliance mechanisms that will, will ensure that we're, we're getting our end of the bargain here. So anyways, that, that was one of the main things that I want to bring up that one of our public participants spoke to as well as Councilmember McCarthy, that we are ensuring we're, we're getting this in the end and not have a situation where we get a, get a good developer who's all in for this, but then sells the property or sells the plans to build it. And then we have the whole rigmarole of multiple owners that with the pass off, we don't have the means to ensure that we're, we're getting to that level. And I did not see as much, and I didn't really see much in this particular amendment for the compliance aspect, but maybe that's elsewhere that's not directly in this particular document, so. So yes, thank you for your answers. Counsel, further comments, questions? Please throw the season cues in the chat box. I am not seeing any at this time. Ms. Neiman?
I just wanted to offer, if it's desired by council, we would be happy to put together sort of a one-pager on the different standards that we're talking about. It would probably be more than a city council report. And to really just give some background on that, I realize that these are not terms we often use and, and deal with in these different standards. So we'd be happy to do that, certainly before the next read, and ideally early next week.
That'd be great, as well as if you could share it publicly, maybe on Facebook or social media as well through the sustainability page. I think it's important for, you know, not just as, as members of council, but the rest of the public to understand what these standards really mean. And definitely before we move into a potentially a yeah, the, the second part of this public hearing, if it does go through for this initial aspect. So, thank you for doing so. All right, I'm not seeing any further, oh, Councilmember Aslan.
Yeah, just real fast, I wanted to express my agreement with Councilmember McCarthy's suggestion about the EV spaces. I'm trying to remember if there were other things in there. I was generally in agreement with what he was going through item by item. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember Shmuni?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you so much Jenny and Tiffany for your conversation with Councilmember McCarthy regarding hers and the EV numbers. Mayor, I too support a higher amount, whatever it is that makes sense, I, I support. And, and I just really appreciate the conversation had around hers and the electric. And I feel really good about the plan moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shmuni. Well, last call for season cues before we end the public hearing and ask for a motion if there is one out there. All right, with that, with that, I'd like to close the public hearing and open them to the floor for a motion.
Hey, Mayor, this is Jim McCarthy. I'm willing to make a motion. And before I do that, I just want to say that there are a few, you know, moving of commas and some little things. I'm hoping that those can be added next time. And then I'll, I'm really looking forward to this kind of a little education on what hirs are and what hyms are too, if you have. Okay, that's, that's an Aslan joke. Anyway. But anyway, I'm optimistic that this will, these little minor changes will get resolved. The other thing I'll point out is that some people are saying, well, why are you making this so hard? Well, this is an incentive. This isn't part of the basic code. So I think the people in the public need to realize that. If they don't want to do these things, they don't have to. They can go with the existing code. So all that said, I would move that we read Resolution twenty-two dash oh-five by title only for the first time.
And I'll second that. Give it to Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Sweet's got it, yep. I saw her picture light up when she spoke before you, Councilmember Shmuni. So, yeah, I have the motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries unanimously. City Clerk?
Actually, Mayor, before I read, I, could I just ask for a quick point of clarification? I know we spoke quite a bit, and I believe I had a majority of council that wanted to change the title in that document. So I think, and City Attorney, correct me, I think we may just need a motion for including that change to the title.
That's correct. I apologize for not jumping in sooner. Thank you.
So I add that to my motion, but I guess my question is, there are some other things that, did we not have consensus on more EV stations, for instance?
It's my understanding we did have a majority regarding the greater EV stations.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to add the new title change that we've already discussed. Add EV stations, and we can negotiate the number and finalize that on final read. So that's, that's my amended emotion. So if we can get an amended second, I think we're in good shape.
I think I heard Councilmember Sweet on that.
You did.
All right, seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I, I.
And I hate to belabor this, but some of my little nitpicky changes, like adding commas and things, do we need to add that to the motion, or, or can we just do that on second read?
That would be a Sterling question. Or City Manager.
Yes, go ahead, Greg.
Well, thank you. I, I think the clerical stuff can be done clerically. Clerically, if that's a word. It can be done by the city clerk. How's that?
Yeah, none of those things change substance.
Correct. Sterling can correct me if I misstate that.
No, it doesn't change the legal meaning or substance. While we often use the phrase words matter, in this case, a clerical correction truly does not change the substance, as has been discussed. You'll have an opportunity to review that again at the second read, to make sure that is.
Hopefully staff can incorporate those nitpicky changes, so we don't have to go through this amendment thing again next time. Thank you.
And with that, Councilmember McCarthy, Mayor and Council, if I might, the one taking the minutes is the one that would be incorporating, or not necessarily incorporating those changes, but working with the staff presenting tonight, both Jenny and Tiffany. Do we have the changes outlined? Do we know what they are? I think we need to clarify before we move forward.
Well, the staff knows, because I emailed them to the staff several days ago. Not, not all this stuff about should we use hirs or that, I didn't get into that. But the nitpicky moving of commas and all that stuff, they already have that.
And this is Stacy Salzberg, and I'm happy to just chime in really quick that I will work very closely with Jenny and Tiffany to make sure that those changes are incorporated in that final read that comes back in a couple weeks.
Well said. Thank you, City Clerk. Well, with that, we are amidst many yays for the motion on the table. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. I'd like to move to read ordinance.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt again. Let me go ahead and read really quick. A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled PZ dash twenty-one dash zero zero two eight two, updates to zoning code residential sustainable building standards as amended.
Thank you. I'd like to, I, I move to read ordinance number twenty-two dash oh-four by title only for the first time. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries unanimously. City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title Ten Flagstaff Zoning Code by adopting by reference that certain document entitled PZ dash twenty-one dash zero zero two eight two, updates to zoning code residential sustainable building standards, providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, City Clerk. And thank you, Neiman and Ms. Antal. And we will see you on March first for the second read. Thank you. We're down to agenda item number thirteen, our regular agenda. Thirteen A is the consideration and adoption of Resolution number twenty-two dash oh-four, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Tucson and the City of Flagstaff for Grand Canyon Community Library Services. Mr. Tolman?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Jared Tolman here, your city and county library director. I'm, I'm gonna turn off my camera while I present. Give me a second to pull that up. Um, I'm gonna turn off my camera while I present, um give me a second to pull that up. Alright, excellent, before I uh, to start off, I I think um a little bit of history of. How the library district is set up will be helpful. Um, o- often everyone is aware of our east side library and our downtown library. But the library district is a little bigger than just that, we do have a few county libraries. One being the Grand Canyon uh Community Library, um that library is um. Controlled and operated by the city of Flagstaff per our county IGA. Um, that IGA is up for renewal next year in twenty twenty-three. Um, and as such, we we operate that library. Um, a while back, we had the city of Tucson reach out to the Grand Canyon Library and request. Library services be brought into the town of Tucson once a week, they they've been having. Um, a number of individuals coming into City Hall um with. Library type questions or services that people are looking for, and so they saw this as an opportunity to maybe. Try and see how well library services do in the town of Tucson. And so as they reached out to the Grand Canyon uh Library, obviously, those questions were redirected to myself. Um, and as we discuss, talked with the city manager there in Tucson. Um, kinda what they were looking for and what they needed, we realized that. Um, adding them to the county IGA may not be the best uh choice moving forward, and so we decided. To maybe do a test run of how well those library services are being utilized. And so we came up with this uh intergovernmental agreement between the city of Flagstaff and. The city of Tucson to provide those library services, the city of Tucson would. Cover the cost um of staff time coming up to the library from the Grand Canyon to then provide those services. This is very much a um uh intergovernmental agreement that is a short. Government agreement, hopefully by next year, we have uh been unable to gauge. The interest of those library services and be able to determine on whether or not um it is then appropriate to look at adding it to the county IGA. And so um during the time span between now and June, and then if we renew next fiscal year. Um, the IGA staff would be going into the library to provide library services and keep stats. To provide to the city of Tucson and to the library, how well those library services are being used. We would also then use those stats uh further to have a conversation with county board supervisors if there is a desire. To move this into the county IGA. Some of the library services that our staff will be providing to Tucson is currying. So library materials to the city of Tucson once a week, um their community members would be able to pick up. Holds that they had placed online, they'd also be able to check out library materials. Um, staff would assist patrons with computer questions and services. We'd be bringing Spanish speaking services to the library or to that community. Um, as well as children's storytimes, other library programs, we'd be providing reference questions. GED prep, job and resume help, as well as library database, database assistance. So those would be the main things that we'd be able to uh along with um. Put traffic into where the lo- library is going to be located in the City Hall of Tucson. Would be able to track all the stats on those services and provide that feedback, and so staff are. Recommending that we, that council approve this IGA and that we be be able to begin. Um, providing those services, having the city of Tucson cover those, um that staff's time. And be able to provide them stats um until June, which then we would come back for a renewal. And with that, I um turn it back over to council if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tolman, any questions, council? Alright, I move to read Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash oh four by title, title only, do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor, I'll second that.
So Solis uh has the second on that one, any further discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, City Clerk.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between the town of Tucson and the city of Flagstaff for Grand Canyon. Community Library Services.
Move to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash oh four. Seconded by Councilmember Solis, any further discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed, that motion carries unanimously, down to agenda item thirteen B, this is the consideration Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash oh six. A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council, the City Flagstaff, Arizona Municipal Corporation of Arizona, to authorize the application of clean water state revolving fund loan. From the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona, staff recommendation, recommended action is to read Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash. Zero six by title only, uh Mr. Tatter.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, uh no presentation on this item, but uh this is a resolution that's required by. The Water Infrastructure Finance Authority to authorize me to uh start the loan process related to some funding we need for our stormwater fund. Uh, we're looking to issue about twenty million dollars, and this is specifically um. Or primarily for the purpose of the real day flag project uh to reimburse ourselves for fifteen million that we provided the Army Corps of Engineer. As well as some upcoming uh land acquisitions and uh studies that we will be doing. Uh, so this is the first step, uh should you approve this, I will begin the loan process with WIFA. Um, Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, and I will be coming back to you with ordinances and contracts to. To move this forward to authorize the debt, uh this application, this process does not authorize me to issue it. I'll come back for that authority, uh and with that, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter, I move to read Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero six by title only, do I have a second? Seconded by uh uh Councilmember McCarthy, any further discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed? That carries unanimously, City Clerk.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, a municipal corporation of Arizona. To authorize the application for a clean water state revolving fund loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona.
Thank you, I move to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero six. Oh, Councilmember Aslan won that time, uh seconded by Councilmember Aslan, any further discussion, all those in favor? Those opposed? Those opposed? That carries unanimously, um moving right along, agenda item thirteen C. Uh, and this is a resolution to adopt amendments to the enforcement response plan that covers the pre-treatment stormwater and cross-connection programs. Staff recommended action is to read Res- Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero seven by title only.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is Sterling Solomon, your city attorney, I'm actually just introducing this item tonight, I won't be giving a detailed presentation. It was put together by Steve Camp, who um fortunately became a first-time grandfather just recently. And so he was not gonna be here tonight, however, if you do have any additional questions after I um give my introduction and basic explanation of it. If you want to dig deeper, he is available, I've found, and you can ask him questions, but basically what you're doing here is adopting our. Enforcement Response Plan, this covers pre-treatment stormwater and cross-connection programs. We have testers that go out to test backflow devices once a year, um and those backflow devices, once they're tested. Um, the business or the owner of the backflow device, the property owner, um receives a notice if. The uh test results are not sent into the city from the business or from the uh. Property owner, if you will, uh but it would be much more effective if we could also issue the notice or require the issuing of a notice. Um, or the, sorry, submission of the results of the test to the city uh compliance staff. Within five days of the test, because it it just makes things more streamlined, this is really more house cleaning than anything else. Just to allow us to require the testers, and the property owners are still required to submit that, but. Uh, it it really just requires those that go out and do the testing to submit that data to our enforcement staff within five days. It's a very simple amendment, and it just requires the reading and approval of the resolution tonight, which is recommended by staff.
Thank you, City Attorney, uh with that, I move to read Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero seven by title only. Seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett, um any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That carries unanimously, City Clerk.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council adopting an amendment to the Flagstaff Water Services Enforcement Response for the city of Flagstaff.
I move to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero seven. Oh, I do see City Attorney has a little C in the chat box, so.
I can go ahead after you finish your motion and uh second and call for a vote after discussion if any may, thank you.
Thank you, Sterling, go ahead, uh seconded by Vice Mayor, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That carries unanimously, Sterling.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and uh Steve Clant Camp and Jolene Montoya, in our compliance um portion of water services, thank you as well. Uh, unfortunately, due to a personal situation, I'm not gonna be able to stay on for the remainder of the meeting tonight. And Kevin Finsel, Deputy City Attorney, has graciously agreed to cover the remainder of the meeting, and I bid you all a good night, thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney, we appreciate it, and we know you uh will will be in good hands with uh Mr. Finsel. Uh, with that.
Agreed, you will be in good hands with Mr. Finsel. Thank you.
Thank you, uh we're down to agenda item number thirteen D. This is the agreement for option to lease city-owned real estate located at seventeen hundred E Sixth Avenue for the purpose of developing permanently affordable housing. Staff recommended action is to approve the lease option agreement with Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona. Mr. Doty.
Good evening, can you see the presentation, because my red box is showing my desktop?
I'm just seeing the desktop right now.
Ah, awesome, okay.
And it is far less cluttered than mine, let me tell you.
This is the auxiliary desktop, don't worry, I won't show you. Let's try this again. How about now?
There it is.
Good grief, alright, well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, Bryce Doty, real estate manager. Tonight, I'm here to present a lease option between the city and Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona. For a parcel of city-owned property immediately north of the skate park in the Sunnyside neighborhood. So just to give our bearings here, we're talking about this star right here. This option obligates the city to enter into a ground lease for permanently affordable housing with Housing Solutions. If Housing Solutions successfully receives funding to develop. So, this option to lease only covers the yellow highlighted portion as seen on the map. The address of these parcels above the skate park, um they still reflect on the assessor's parcel address. As the same as the address as the State Park, which is seventeen hundred E Sixth Avenue, this can create some confusion. Another way to create confusion is to include a slide in the initial council package, which erroneously highlights the skate park as well. So, that's something I did, you're welcome, um just to clarify, this lease option is only impacting the city land north of the skate park. And what is highlighted in yellow on this current slide. This parcel has some history, there were some previous attempts to develop this parcel with a affordable housing developer, they were ultimately unsuccessful. But those efforts did result in a rezone that was required for the parcel for multifamily. And then it was, did result in a previously approved site plan, and so that developer, Bryn Shore. They have kindly donated all of those development plans for this parcel to Housing Solutions. All that groundwork really makes this project competitive for housing grants, and that plan. Was, is, 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 this is just a snapshot of that previously approved site plan. Um, includes eleven three-bedroom affordable housing apartments on the parcel. And it situates the community garden, it maintains it, but it situates it on this uh parcel to the west here. And just to, for context, so right here is how it was parcelized. Um, the north or the southern half of this is the community garden right now, all that's gonna shift onto uh this parcel. And we're going to build um apartments should this uh option to lease result in a ground lease. So this option is valid until June first, twenty twenty-three, and it also provides for two one-year extensions. Housing Solutions will pay the city thirty dollars per year for the option. If the option results in a ground lease, the city will lease the land for at least ninety-nine years at a hundred dollars a year. The rest of the terms of the ground lease will be negotiated upon successful funding from Housing Solutions. And the eventual ground lease will be brought before council for formal approval at that time. That ends my presentation, I'm available, and more importantly, housing staff is available for any questions or clarifications, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doty, um I do understand we do have uh public uh participants that I would be um like to. Yeah, tune in here right now.
Thank you, Mayor, our first speaker is Devana McLaughlin, Devana, you may unmute yourself and s- address Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council, my name is Devana McLaughlin, and I have the honor of serving as the CEO of Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona. A local nonprofit organization whose mission is to build opportunity for sustainable affordable housing. I want to take a quick moment to thank council and city staff for considering the lease option of land before you tonight for affordable housing. Housing Solutions has worked with Bryn Shore Development, who donated site plans and architectural drawings to our organization for this site. The plans call for the creation of eleven three-bedroom apartments, as was previously stated, on site leasing space and a community garden space. The plans have aged a bit since they were first vetted by the city's community development department. But the project can be shovel-ready in short order with some minor updates from the architect and engineer, who have both agreed to work with our organization. Housing Solutions needs site control, which would occur through this lease option to pursue grant funding for construction of affordable units on the site. We know there is additional funding coming into our state through recovery dollars and federal investment. We believe there is opportunity now to make affordable housing on the site a reality. And look forward to increasing the community's supply of decent and affordable housing available to households in our community. Investment in affordable housing unit creation is needed now more than ever. Just today, I had a gentleman walk into our office looking for an affordable rental. I had to tell him that our rental units are unfortunately full and our waiting list is extensive. I gave him referrals to other income-based affordable housing properties in our town. And he stopped me cold when he asked me if the affordable housing need in our community was the worst I've ever seen. I had to pause, quite honestly, as housing has been a critical community need for my entire professional life. But I had to agree with him that the cost of housing is higher now than it's ever been, and that more and more people were struggling to find decent and affordable housing. Essentially, I told him the answer was yes, it's worse now than it's ever been. Because that need is great and growing, now is the time to continue to push forward for investment in affordable housing. It simply doesn't happen without money or land. We thank you for your partnership as the land is the key first step to development, and we look forward to working with the city on this project to create units of housing. That are affordable and available permanently to our community members. I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have, and I thank you again for this. I'm happy to answer any questions y'all may have, and I thank you again for this opportunity to move forward with an exciting affordable housing development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I'm not seeing Cs and Qs in the chat box, so happy to take the next, uh, um, public comment.
Yes, Mayor, our next public speaker is Ms. Deborah Harris. Ms. Harris, you may go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
Okay, can you hear me? Am I unmuted?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor DC, Vice Mayor Daggett and council members. Thank you for providing this safe space for community participation. I'm here tonight in my role as Chair of the League of Neighborhoods. The League of Neighborhoods members include Sunnyside Neighborhood Association. Southside Neighborhood, Southside Community Association and La Plaza Neighborhood Association. We want council and the community to know that we are very well aware of the need for more workforce housing and affordable housing in our city. We are concerned, however, that the city is moving in a direction of redlining by placing more housing of this type in the Sunnyside neighborhood. We, the city, has other property in areas where there does not, where this type of housing does not already exist. Sunnyside is the most populated neighborhood in the city. What's happening with the property that we own, um, and have developed in Cheshire? What's going to happen with that property? And could this, could that be a place where this project could go? Sunnyside Neighborhood, uh, Association has not had an opportunity to weigh in on this, uh, decision. Uh, they do not have a neighborhood plan like, uh, Southside and La Plaza. And they need an opportunity to, for their voices to be heard. Before we go, um, down this road. We need to look at our other properties and spread affordable work, affordable and workforce housing in other parts of our city, in this, in, in, in other parts of our city. Is this another case of not in my neighborhood? Are we redlining Sunnyside? Affordable housing needs to be spread throughout our community. Thank you for this opportunity to provide comments to you in a safe, collegial and respectful space. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. I'm not seeing Cs and Qs in the chat box, so is there another, uh, public participant?
Yes, Mayor, we have Ms. Cara House. Cara, if you could please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor DC, Vice Mayor Daggett and all honored council members. My name is Cara House and I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I applaud the city's consideration of the development of permanent affordable housing as presented in this agenda item. My only purpose in speaking on this agenda item is to remind council of prior conversations, particularly in the development of the ten-year housing plan. But also in other regional planning dialogues. Which called for the thoughtful consideration of equity and diversity in the development of future housing. I urge the constant recollection of the request from the Equity Working Group to commit to diverse housing types in all neighborhoods of Flagstaff. My desire in this reminder is not to suggest that the city prohibit or restrict the development of affordable housing in any one neighborhood. But rather to ensure that all housing, including affordable housing options, is available to all Flagstaff in all neighborhoods. I thank you for the work you're doing to advance housing. And ask that we do this work in all parts of Flagstaff to increase affordable options for all who need it, wherever they choose to call home in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. House. Alright, I think we are, uh, ready for the next public participant, if there are any.
Mayor, that concluded our public participation at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, with that, I'm turning it inward to council for, uh, comments, questions, or motions, or whatever we may decide. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I think Ms. House and Ms. Harris, uh, make some very valid points. That we need to put, um, affordable and workforce housing throughout the city, not just in one neighborhood. Um, just as a footnote, my son lives on that very street. So I know this location very well. Um, I, I agree that it's, we need to spread affordable housing and workforce housing throughout the city. But here we have an actual proposal. By, you know, it's a bird in the hand, and I think we'd be foolish to not you know, take opportunity for this. Yes, we need to do similar projects in other areas, but considering that we have a group that's willing to do this project, uh, I support it. I absolutely support it.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Uh, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm wondering if I can ask housing staff to address the concerns expressed and maybe, um, shed some light on uh, potential development, affordable housing development on other parcels, city-owned parcels. I'm happy to take that, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Awesome. Uh, Mayor and Council, Sarah Dar, Housing Director. Um, I'm, I'm actually happy to speak to that. It has been a long-term pursuit. Um, to make sure that we have housing, um, spread around the community. We are working in other areas, but I want to give a little bit of history of the piece that we're talking about tonight. Um, it was actually part of a land trade prior to me starting with the city more than twenty-one years ago. For the purpose of the detention basin, um, and affordable housing. And so there have been um, efforts to get this developed before. We were super close prior. Um, and it's been Housing Solutions working with the previous development group to get those plans to work to continue to make this a success. Um, we are working to develop housing, um, further east on Fanning and Lockett. We do have the piece out by Schultz Pass. Um, we have been engaged over the years in the pursuit of acquiring land in other neighborhoods. Um, unfortunately, we're not money-rich. And this is where land has been acquired. The pieces that we're talking about in Sunnyside. Um, we haven't acquired any land in Sunnyside in probably the last ten years easily. All of the projects done by Housing Solutions and Habitat for Humanity. And also the tax credit development that is on Isabel as well. Um, were all done on land that was acquired well, well before, um, the last ten years. We are working to diversify, um, our community with affordable housing in each neighborhood. And which is a strategy within the ten-year housing plan as well. So we are fully aware of, um, of the, and it's not just a desire. It really is a goal of, of spreading that affordable housing around. We are working to also utilize the resources that we already have, and that is what this piece is. I'm happy to answer any other questions that may come up.
Thank you, Ms. Dar. Council, any further Cs, Qs? Or Ms. In the chat box? Uh, Councilmember Schmody.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, Sarah, for the, uh, response. And thank you to the members of the public that called in. Uh, I, 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 I really appreciate the comments. And I agree, um, that we're working to, to change. Um, and to better have infill that is diversified around our community. Um, and I appreciate Sarah, you know, responding to that. Um, but Mayor and Council, you know, this is on us to a certain degree. You know, that, that Schultz Pass parcel that's highly politicized comes to mind. You know, and, and just, I, I like to see us have that conversation there. I know that's going to be extremely difficult to navigate and get through, and, and I don't know if there's political will to overcome the public pushback. But too often, our populations that are in lower-income neighborhoods marginalize. And they don't have a voice often, and they don't engage like the community around the Schultz Pass parcel. And, and we need to remember that we serve this entire community. And, um, Sarah, Sarah, I know you really care about affordable housing. And we've invested tremendously in that Schultz Pass parcel. And I know we're not talking about that tonight, Mayor. So I'll wrap this part of my conversation up, but I guess I'm just like clinging to council. Let's, let's show some political leadership and some political will and, and actually diversify where we build. Um, thank you, Kevin, and I'll wrap it at that point. Um, I really do support this moving forward this evening, and I do see this opportunity that's in front of us and I'm excited about it. And I'm grateful to the staff and our team, our, our partners in the community and uh, Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona for their efforts here. And I'm grateful that, you know, we're not taking away the skate park and we're, we're, you know, we're also not going to take away the, the, the garden. We're adjusting the garden, but we're not taking it away. But I guess, you know, again, my, I guess my question to you, Mayor, and to Sarah really is. When will we have an opportunity to talk about the other parcels that we have as a city and, and even revisit the Schultz Pass parcel? Um, is that a question that I can ask?
Yeah, let, let's have Fensel touch in here, because I think we're veering off. But, uh, if he's okay with it, then happy to, uh, continue that line of questions.
Yeah, Ma- Mayor, this is Kevin. That, that question's fine. It can be answered, sure.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Dar.
Thank you. Um. Mayor and Council, we are moving forward with the RAD process, the redevelopment process of our public housing. Uh, we have selected a successful respondent and are busy negotiating a pre-development agreement we hope to months. Part of that process will be to look at the other city parcels that we have and discuss where development makes the most sense. Um, of course, with a goal of not, um, putting everything in one place. So we anticipate that conversation coming within the next year. Of course, if council would like to discuss a separate, um, if you want to discuss a piece of property one by one, we work at your pleasure and are happy to bring those forward for your discussion and consideration whenever you like.
Thank you. Um, I'm definitely interested in, in that conversation. Uh, Mayor, I'll leave it at that in terms of how we move forward. Um, and thank you, Sarah. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you both. And I do, uh, understand we have another public commenter who, uh, would like to speak, and I'd be happy to take them now before we move on.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Maria Castillo Rincon. Maria, you may go ahead. Maria, are you able to unmute yourself? It should be in the upper right-hand corner of your screen, uh, just left of the Leave button. Maria, would you see you have your video on? Um, the, the mute button is right next to the video button.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for, uh, this, this opportunity and allowing me to speak. Thank you, Mayor, and the entire council. Uh, yes, I understand that we have, um, other places that we would like to see affordable housing. Um, this is the least controversial, um, piece of land that we have right now. And so let's please develop something. And let's work on, yes, getting other, um, areas in Flagstaff to become affordable housing. But like always, uh, this is my third time speaking on affordable housing.
Maria, we aren't able to hear you?
I'm sorry, um, I got interrupted by my own voice. Um, yes, and so, yes, I would like to see affordable housing all over Flagstaff. But we know that this becomes controversial and political. And this issue of us versus them, I have heard it many, many, many times. This is a parcel of land that has already been designated as affordable housing. It's there. The plans are there. Let's move on. I understand that we need affordable housing all over the city. But this is going to help eleven families right now. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can still hear you now. Are you still there, Maria?
Yes, I'm still here. I don't know if I'm recording myself. I guess I'm having issues with my audio.
No problem. Uh, please continue.
Um, I don't know where I left off.
Just that this would be eleven, uh, more units that could be utilized now, are for families.
Yes, this is eleven, uh, apartments, three-bedroom apartments that will help families that are, that are low income right now that you can't hear me?
I can hear you. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I would like to encourage, um, the council, the mayor, the vice mayor, to please vote on this. Pass this, um, make sure that we have these affordable housing units for these families. Um, and if we need to develop in other areas of Flagstaff, let's do that as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Alright, and, uh, just to confirm that, is the, uh, only, uh, public commenter?
That is the last that we have at this time, yes.
Alright, well, uh, with that, council, if we have any more comments or questions, uh, also happy to, uh, take a motion. Uh, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just have a quick comment. Um, I, I support having a larger conversation about what steps that we're taking to include affordable housing uh, in all areas of the community. And whether that comes as part of, um, an update to the housing plan. Or it's a separate item that staff brings to us. Um, I know that staff has given a lot of thought about it and, um, I'd love to have the discussion at some point in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Uh, that, Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I too would be interested in a, a future discussion as been alluded to by the Vice Mayor and others. But for tonight, I move that we approve the lease option agreement with Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona.
I second that. Um, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Alright, with that, we're, uh, down to Agenda Thirteen E. But, uh, I think before that, we should take a bit of a break, because I suspect this might be a little bit longer of an agenda item. Uh, seven oh five now. Let's, uh, reconvene at seven twenty. Uh, to discuss the, uh, Resolution Adopting Flagstaff's Ten-Year Housing Plan. Thank you. Alrighty. It is seven twenty. Ready to get back at it, and I do see we do have, uh, three other member, members of council at least online, so we have quorum. Uh, so with that, we are down to Agenda Item Number Thirteen E. And this is the Consideration Adoption of Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Two Dash Zero Three. A Resolution Adopting Flagstaff's Ten-Year Housing Plan. Um, Ms. Dar and Ms. Bloom, take us away.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the privilege of being first on this one. So, Mayor and Council, again, Sarah Dar, Housing Director. And I wanted to update you on what has happened since the last time we were here. Last time we were here, we thought we'd be before you earlier. I think our target date was December. And the commitment we made to you, however, was that we would take the time necessary to make sure we addressed the hundreds of public comments that came in. And that's what we did. And we received so many comments that it took us some time. Uh, the comments were sorted, categorized, considered, researched, and impacted the final document that Leah is going to present in a few minutes.
and impacted the final document that Leah is going to present in a few minutes. In addition to changes resulting from the commission, city council, and public comment, staff also made technical and conforming changes along the way. Technical and conforming changes are the types of things you were talking about earlier, like commas being moved, et cetera. They are purely technical and conforming. And Leah will cover all substantial changes made since the plan was last presented to you. We are here today only as a result of a massive team effort. I am simply the one with the privilege of introducing this item to you for discussion. We would not be here with such a quality product if not for literally hundreds of citizens of Flagstaff that have contributed thoughts, ideas, and critiques, including you, the city council, the Housing Commission, and city staff outside of housing, such as long-range planning and the Attorney's Office. Housing staff is immensely grateful for the commitment, time, and dedication that's brought us to this point, including the time and commitment of all of the citizens that have had their fingers on this plan. While this project is a massive community effort, there is a thread that runs through this entire, entire project. And that one thread, that one person, does deserve a moment of special recognition and a huge thank you. And that is Leah Bloom, who's the Housing Project Manager. It is because of Leah's exceptional project management, problem-solving, dedication to this plan that is before you today in final form. In addition to Leah, Justina Costa, the Assistant Housing Director, provided endless support and encouragement along the way. Leah is always gracious and remembers to thank others. She remembers to the names of all of the people that have participated in this and the groups that they met with. But very rarely does she receive a thank you for her work, nor does Justina. So I want to say thank you to Leah and Justina for their leadership, professionalism, and for their love of affordable housing and Flagstaff. This plan will help guide our work program for the next 10 years. And as we keep saying, it's not going to collect dust on the shelf. I'm going to give Leah a second to wipe her eyes because she did cry when we did this to the Housing Commission and say again, thank you, Leah, and thank you to city council for putting this effort in front of us as something for us to do. We are proud to present to you tonight the final 10-year housing plan. Leah?
Thanks, Sarah, and hello, council. Hello, Mayor. I'm going to just introduce myself. My eyes are dry. I was prepared this time, so there's no surprises. Thanks so much for the introduction, though. I'm really grateful for it. And I'm going to turn off my camera and present to you and then bring it back on when we have a robust conversation. Just get organized. So it is with great excitement that the housing team is presenting to you the final 10-year housing plan. Today, we will quickly review the housing emergency declaration that council established in December of 2020. We're going to discuss the extensive public participation that took place from the beginning to the completion of the final plan. And we will cover the results from the community forum survey regarding the draft plan. We'll also discuss the substantial updates that Sarah was talking about that were incorporated into the final plan. And lastly, the presentation will end with next steps for plan implementation and reporting. And housing will be asking you, council, for your consideration of adoption to Flagstaff's final 10-year housing plan. This presentation is about 30 minutes long, and we look forward to it being followed by robust conversation and public participation. The citizen petition came before council to declare the housing emergency just over a year ago. The declaration called for a housing plan to be created and asked for a single comprehensive, community-facing document to summarize the city's immediate and long-term needs and strategies to improve, improving housing affordability. The term plan, as you know, is used in many different city documents. We have our regional plan, which is our general plan. There's the specific plans that are like our south side plans and other neighborhood plans. And then there's the more single-subject policy plans, like our carbon neutrality plan or the housing plans. The housing plan and the purpose of a single-subject policy planning document is to set up programs of work and priorities, yet it may not have all the details for each strategy. So this plan, which we're presenting to you tonight, will provide a path forward for the next 10 years and will provide solutions that the City of Flagstaff can do to addressing Flagstaff's housing emergency. This plan provides, and oh, this will be accomplished through four policy categories. Excuse me, create, connect, preserve, and protect. The community will learn how housing is interconnected to health care, equity in neighborhoods, zoning and land use, sustainability, and economic opportunity. In our recent housing survey created for the plan, 75.8% of respondents, and that's 2,224 people, strongly agreed that owning a home was important to them. An additional 16.9% of the respondents agreed to this. Now, while 85% of Flagstaff residents strongly supported the development of affordable housing in the survey, this support for affordable housing dropped 20% when the question was localized to respondents' neighborhoods. We have work to do in educating the community what affordable housing is, what it looks like as infrastructure, who it serves, and how it keeps communities together. And this is exactly what the 10-year housing plan does. The current housing emergency has deep roots with no single root cause. There's no single solution to addressing this housing emergency, but rather multiple strategies that will work together in providing residents with additional housing stability. Flagstaff's residents' responses to the housing survey illustrated that the housing emergency is causing them to leave our community. A little over 58% of Flagstaff residents stated that they were either nearly certain to somewhat likely going to relocate due to housing costs. And the question we must ask ourselves is, what would Flagstaff become if 58% of our population moved? The intent of this plan is to help individuals and families achieve housing affordability for those who want to continue to call Flagstaff their home. The plan was created through continuous public participation. It began one month after the housing emergency declaration occurred. In January of 2021, the Housing Commission and the community got to work in creating a framework for action. The commission approved the public participation plan, and this is when they established six informal working groups. These informal working groups worked nonstop from January to April, producing qualitative and quantitative data and creating policy initiatives and strategies to address Flagstaff's housing emergency. The working groups were Gap Analysis, Working Group Neighborhood and Equity, Sustainability, Land Use and Zoning, and Housing and Healthcare. Now, the draft policy initiatives were then vetted internally, legally, and through the commission, and they were also shared with council and the community at large. Working groups included commissioners, city staff, community stakeholders. And then, and they also included our real estate community, such as our realtors, lenders, architects and developers, builders. We had homeowner and renter representation. Teachers hopped on board. So did our indigenous commissioners. We had data scientists and tons of organizations such as F-Cubed, Akona, The Chamber, NAU, Native American for Community Actions, Flagstaff Shelter Services, the Guidance Center, NARBA, Health Choice, Housing Solutions and Catholic Charities. The county was involved. Our League of Neighborhoods was involved, Interfaith Council, and more. The informal working group started the momentum to address Flagstaff's housing emergency. It grew into more than 80 volunteers and 1,000 volunteer hours. The local housing survey that was distributed garnered close to 3,000 responses. And to date, the Housing Commission unanimously approved the final housing plan. Four housing commission meetings were held and three council meetings were held. Once the plan was established, the draft entered into a 30-day public comment period where the community provided feedback on plan, policy initiatives, and strategies via Flagstaff's community forum. 327 respondents participated in our community forum, which was an estimate of 16.4 hours of public comment. Now, you will see this 327 participant numbers increase later in the slides. And that's because additional community members made comments during other opportunities of public outreach, such as our public meetings, emails, and stakeholder outreach meetings. Housing staff also met with interest groups, and these interest groups can, were our county, so Coconino County, The Chamber, F-Cubed, Northern Arizona Association for Realtors, and the Continuum of Care. Housing staff and current planners got to work. We reviewed and incorporated public comments and feedback into the final 10-year housing plan. And I just want to put a huge shout out to Sarah Decter and Jordan for their dedication and guidance in this process. They were such a resource for this plan. Just as a refresher, the plan defines how, what affordable housing is. And as you know, it's when a household pays, pays no more than 30% of their income towards housing. Those who pay more than 30% are considered living in housing cost burden situations, and they may find difficulties in affording necessi- necessity, or necessities, sorry, such as food, clothing, transportation, and medical care. Data indicates that roughly 22,000 residents in Flagstaff are living in housing cost burden situations. And since 2011, the median sales price of a home rose by 119%, while the area median income levels only increased by 16%. Area median income is of course referred throughout the document, and it explains how federal subsidies serve up to 80% of our area median income and how these funds are limited in Flagstaff. Now, Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona and the city's housing section annually update our local needs assessment. And so the needs assessment that you see in the final plan reflects 2019 census results. The conditions continue to show that Flagstaff residents need housing subsidies or units in order to remove households from living in housing cost burden situations and to help them advance through the housing continuum. 47% of all households are extremely low to low income in Flagstaff. And 65% of all Flagstaff households are extremely low to moderate income. Again, this is a huge indicator that 65% of our population could benefit from some amount of subsidy in order to achieve housing that is affordable. Now, this is challenging in a market that is 13% higher for the cost of living and 29% higher for the cost of housing compared to the national average. To paint the picture, let's look at what Flagstaff families can afford. I know you've seen this slide multiple times. I'm going to give you one example so that it also helps the public understand our situation. But I have to start off by saying that Flagstaff is what it is because of the people that live here. So looking at a family of four at 100% of our area median income, which is roughly $77,000, they can healthily afford a rental house that costs no more than $1,920 a month. And they could potentially buy a house with an affordable mortgage at $359,000. So a family of four at that size, and the cost of housing, it's really difficult for both rental and ownership opportunities at that price. With that, again, this confirms that we need to increase housing subsidies and provide additional support to households above the 80% AMI level. And we also need to update development practices that create and preserve access to affordable housing for all. From the housing survey, we know that 93% of the respondents strongly agree or agree that owning a home is important to them. And we asked these community members what their barriers are to homeownership. Among respondents that were not already homeowners, 88% cited the average home price was a barrier. Over half of non-homeowners cited that paying too much in rent and not being able to save for down payment was their barrier. And one in four cited qualifying for a mortgage as the barrier to homeownership. So the Gap Analysis Working Group looked at both market rate housing needs and subsidized slash affordable housing needs for the plan. And after applying local and regional data, they determined that there are 7,976 market rate units and 12,072 households in need of a housing subsidy or an affordable unit. This number does not alone mean that we have over 20,000 households living without a place to call home. It means simply that 12,072 low-income households are living in less-than-ideal housing situations. Examples of this are paying too much in rent, doubling up, unable to advance through the housing continuum. While the remaining 7,976 market rate houses are needed to free up pressures on Flagstaff's housing stock and to catch up with population growth. So in a market with not enough homes and without adequate subsidies, the people that really lose out the most in Flagstaff are our low-to-moderate income residents. Again, that's 74% of our population. The plan's policy initiatives and strategies include both the number of housing units and subsidies to increase both the number of housing units and subsidies that will provide targeted assistance to households in need. Now, both of these concepts are mutually interchangeable and will require bold action to address our housing emergency. The plan also identifies the meaning of the term "housing subsidy", which is defined as a form of financial assistance aimed towards alleviating housing costs. The plan was written for residents of all income levels with an equity lens, ensuring that each household gets what that household needs. So policies and strategies that aim to achieve equity, they may result in unequal distribution of resources, but they will lead to more equitable outcomes for everyone. Flagstaff's housing continuum is a graphic that represents a variety of housing types, not all of our housing types, but a variety of available housing types in Flagstaff for income or for households at all income levels. It indicates that households with different levels of income require different levels of subsidy in order to move up or advance through the housing continuum. So for the purpose of the plan, we use the housing continuum as a method to communicate possible housing solutions for households at all income levels. Addressing the housing emergency will require adequate funding for programs such as eviction prevention, down payment assistance, and employer-assisted housing programs. It will also require the creation and preservation of affordable rental and ownership opportunities. These bold steps must be accomplished in partnership across the entire housing sector, including all levels of government, nonprofit housing providers, private industry, housing advocates, and from our community at large. The plan defines the housing emergency, and it provides one overarching goal, supported by two fundamental elements that together will significantly impact housing attainability. The goal will be accomplished through the implementation of policy initiatives and strategies, which are in this document. And implementation of the policy initiatives and strategies will be accomplished through the City of Flagstaff's budget process in collaboration with city staff, private, public, and nonprofit partnerships. So the single overarching goal for the 10-year housing plan is to reduce the current affordable housing need in our community by half over the next 10 years. Element one is to impact at least 6,000 low-to-moderate income Flagstaff residents through a combination of unit creation or subsidy provision. Element two is to create or preserve 7,976. Element two is to create or preserve seven thousand nine hundred and seventy six housing units. By twenty thirty one with a minimum of ten percent of them being affordable. And this will be increased. This will increase the overall supply of market rate workforce and affordable housing occupied by local residents. So once the working groups and the community created our draft housing plan, housing shared it broadly. With the community at large through public meetings, we sent over seven thousand emails. Stakeholder meetings we held and through our community forum survey as mentioned before. And we asked through the community forum survey. For our respondents to prioritize policy initiatives and to state how favorable they were. To each of the strategies in the plan. We also asked for comments and feedback about missing strategies and just overall comments about the plan. And this is where three hundred and twenty seven individuals prioritize the policies and they showed us how favorable. How favorable they were to each of the strategies. And they submitted over four hundred written comments, which once split by topic. Ended up being over six hundred written comments. So again, our current planners and our housing staff coded. Each of the comments and organized them so that we could. Implement what was actionable into the plan. And for a detailed list. Of all of these comments, we ask for you to refer to the attached document to the staff summary. It's titled response to comments. Now, we're going to dive into a high level overview of how the comments were addressed and updated. And how they were incorporated into the plan in the following slides. So. Minor changes were suggested for policy initiatives and strategies. And we like to think that this is because of the thorough public engagement and hard work. That went into the creation of the policy initiatives and strategies upfront. The changes incorporated were for clarification. Housing staff attempted to add a few strategies that were noted by commoners. But after future review, we realized that these additions were redundant with what the working group had already created. Again, there are four policy categories which are create, connect, preserve and protect. In these categories, there are thirteen robust policy initiatives and fifty eight strategies. This is our framework for action for how the city will address the housing emergency. The plan now shows the policy initiatives in order from the community's response to prioritization. I'm not going to discuss every strategy today, but I encourage everyone to refer to page fifty two of the plan. Title detailed list of the tenure housing plans, policy initiatives and strategies. The create category includes policy initiatives such as incentivizing the creation of affordable units. Through various programs and mechanisms. It has strategies to ensure that the regional plan includes robust affordable housing goals. And this is great timing with our regional plan update happening. There are strategies to create dedicated funding source for affordable housing in Flagstaff. Strategies to amend zoning code and to facilitate the development of all housing types. And we also included strategies that explore regulatory efficiencies and cost saving practices. For the connect policy category, there's many strategies to reducing homelessness and fostering housing permanency for all. Ways to implement a framework for centering equity and proposed and existing practices and programs. And to integrate healthcare into housing and vice versa. For our preserve category. It encourages adaptive reuse of buildings and also expands efforts to preserve existing housing stock. And lastly, protect includes policy initiatives to continue to advance further Arizona and federal fair housing laws. And to reduce barriers to equitable housing solutions. And to encourage affordable housing to make sure that is a part of every Flagstaff neighborhood. And their strategies to address disparate impact. And to continue to have the city council lobby and support federal and state legislation. To encourage change to federal and state laws. And to increase the amount of funding for preservation and construction of affordable housing. Now to the written comment. The four hundred written comments came through again, public meetings, email, stakeholder meetings and the community forum survey. So once these were split by topic, these comments grew into over six hundred comments. And in order for staff to focus their efforts. On the comments that would improve or achieve the scope of the work of the ten year housing plan. Comments were marked actionable or non actionable. So again, refer to the comment response document to see the percentage of actionable and non actionable items. By topic and subtopic. Both actionable and non actionable comments are being shared with city staff working in that subject area. Comments determined to be actionable provided staff with insight on the plan's goals. And requested more information. Non actionable comments fell outside of the scope of work for the ten year housing plan. And some examples of these are when it related to other city planning projects or strategic documents. An example of this is discussing water or long, long term planning. Or addressing JW PAL areas future development. This is more appropriate for our regional planning. Another example of a non actionable comment would be. That was that it is illegal or unconstitutional to implement. And an example would be stop all growth and prevent investors from buying property in Flagstaff. Other non actionable comments were factually inaccurate based on the research from the housing commission and the project team. Example would be increasing supply will not help address the affordable housing emergency. And then lastly, non actionable items were general support or opposition to the plan that didn't provide a specific comment. On how the document could be improved. So reviewing and organizing comments resulted in a final code book that contained nine topics and seventy two subtopics. And you can see the topics here. They ranged from growth and development to the people we serve. And the programs that the city of Flagstaff provides. Involvement, meaning community engagement. Topics regarding sustainability and just general plan comments. Also, of course, economic opportunity. So through the actionable comments, changes to language was incorporated into the plan, the final plan. And here are examples of language changes. So for plan flexibility. While the tenure housing plan must be a living document grounded in a clear scope of work, but flexible in its approach. Flexibility is necessary to reflect changing market conditions and expand knowledge base. The plan is a framework for action providing conceptual strategies that the city will undertake to address. The community's housing emergency. For evaluation reporting, we heard from council members and the community at large. That reporting should be shared with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the plan now states that city staff will measure progress on key performance indicators. And will report to the Flagstaff City Council, our housing commission, our planning and zoning commission. And the community annually regarding policy initiatives and strategy accomplishments. And during the last council meeting, we had a detailed discussion about the intention of the plan. It now states upfront in the plan that the intention of the tenure housing plan is to help individuals and families achieve. Housing affordability for those who want to continue to call Flagstaff their home. We also have language about multi-pronged approach. The plan discusses how the current amount, the current housing emergency has deep roots with no single root cause. And that there's no single solution to addressing the housing emergency, but rather multiple strategies that will work together. With providing residents with additional housing subsidies. The term NMB acronym for not in my backyard, it was removed. This term was offensive to some of our community members and the city wants to stay unified in housing affordability efforts. So NMB has been replaced with the term community opposition. NAU additional language has been incorporated about students' financial housing situations. And how they too can be living in housing cost burden situations. Housing data in this section now includes off campus developments targeted towards students. And how these developments occupancy rates nearly decrease campus student housing by three thousand five hundred. And we want to take the, we took the opportunity to educate the community in the plan. That the city of Flagstaff does not have authority in controlling construction on NAU campus. Nor does it have authority of student enrollment. Now, it would be remiss if we did not say that NAU is in the top one percent nationally for on campus housing capacity. Per student. In two thousand and twenty, NAU housed forty four percent of its students on campus. We had a language update in our zoning and land use section, which now talks about. How zoning and land use has profound impact on housing locations and types. And how it also can impact cost and affordability. This section discusses percentages of land and their specific uses. And the language has been updated regarding inclusionary zoning. So new sections in the plan. Public comments asked for more detail regarding Coconino County's partnership. The legal barriers to adopting affordable housing policies in the state of Arizona. And what housing first method is. And they also asked what different forms of housing looks like. So these topics have all new sections of the plan. The plan now states that reporting along with strategy implementation and program advancement will be shared with Coconino County. We now have a section discussing the legal barriers to adopting affordable housing policies. In the state of Arizona and this information is based on a recent document that was published by Arizona State University's Morrison Institute. For public policy. The housing first model is now described. The plan also talks about different forms of housing in this section that the community can read. How in order for Flagstaff to attain affordable affordability along the housing continuum. It will likely need to broaden housing developments to include missing middle housing. A term that describes a range of multi-unit or clustered housing types that are more compatible in scale. With single family homes and neighborhoods. Now, missing middle housing not only affects affordability, but it also lowers. Our car, our community's carbon footprint by increasing walkability in our neighborhoods. Example pictures of missing middle housing is also included in the document. The plan has a section, a new section on racial disparities and housing justice, another big topic. From the draft. While the plan does focus on income levels and housing situations for all Flagstaff residents. Comments made it clear that we must consider racial and ethnic composition when discussing housing stability. And when looking at housing cost burden based on racial and ethnic composition. The section applies HUD data and terminology. So results show that different than national data. Here in Flagstaff, Asian, non Hispanic households are most likely to experience housing cost burden situations. And yet aligning with national statistics in Flagstaff. Whites, non Hispanic households are least likely to experience housing cost burden. We applied the homelessness man or homeless management information system known as HMIS data. This is the database that our social service providers use for coordinated entry and front door. And results show that Flagstaff's indigenous residents are disproportionately experiencing homelessness. Making up ten percent of Flagstaff's population, but thirty eight percent of its homeless population. Residents who are black or African American or multiracial are also disproportionately experiencing homelessness in our community. And the city of Flagstaff is committed to examining solutions that will eradicate. The racial and ethnic disparities in housing outcomes and homelessness. Comments displayed concerns that the community. That increasing additional housing subsidies and units would go towards non established residents. Or those moving here for the services. And there's a new section in this plan that discusses how the city of Flagstaff serves local residents through our housing programs. Such as incentivizing residency through our public housing programs and requiring owner occupancy. For all of our home buying programs. Those are just a few examples. And there was a common theme from our commoners that they would like to see. More housing operated and managed by the city of Flagstaff. A new section in the plan was incorporated and the section is called. City of Flagstaff's Housing Authority and Possibilities. This section discusses HUD's Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. And how the city intends to reposition and redevelop its public housing. In order to increase inventory of public and private affordable housing. For renters and potentially homeowners throughout the city. And lastly, there's a section in the plan called building unity in community. This is a new section that is in response to comments stating that pictures of affordable housing are so important. The section also provides the linkage of other community strengths and characters. Such as ensuring that affordable housing is within walking distance to public transportation. Our schools, medical facilities and grocery stores and ensuring that affordable housing. Incorporate the principle of good design. So examples of a how of affordable housing with good design are shown in this section. These were the substantial changes to the final tenure housing plan. I would love to hand this over to Sarah Dar for the next slide to discuss the tenure housing's plan implementation.
Thank you, Leah. Mayor and Council. Leah, wait, there we go. No more echo. I don't know if I can match Leah's very soothing pace and voice. That's just not me, so. I'm not even going to try. But the next slide talks about implementation and as we all know, a plan is only as good as its implementation. So I wanted to spend a minute talking about what, what's next? What does implementation look like if the plan is approved? So in consultation with the Housing Commission and City Council, staff will prepare an annual implementation plan. And that will be based on resource allocation and our staff capacity. As you may recall from budget retreat, let's say a week and a half ago. Staff's already in the process of requesting resources for the implementation of this plan in the coming budget year. The requests for funding are actually centered on the strategies that received a significant degree of community support. And that are prioritized in the plan as immediate and short term strategies. This year, timing's been a challenge as budget requests were due before the plan is approved. So we're not in the order I would, I would like. To have brought this to folks in, but we're working with what we have right now. So if approved, we'll be checking in with the Housing Commission this year. Excuse me, regarding a work plan based on the tenure plan for the coming year. As well as this next important step of creating evaluation process for annual reporting and measurement of progress. Next year, we'll be able to consult the Housing Commission prior to making budget requests to you. We will continue to work through internal processes related to city budget and city operations. And I really can't express how excited we are about the momentum surrounding collaboration. With other city departments and programs as well as our community partners as we move forward into implementation. As Leah pointed out and is mentioned in the plan several times. Is that implementation's going to be based on resources available in order for us to move forward on that. That's one of the reasons we've talked about having a flexible plan as we know, resources. Excuse me, ebb and flow over time. So we will. So we will continue to work within the frameworks that we have. But also recognizing council's priorities in the declaration of the housing emergency. And the tenure plan that is being presented to you tonight for consideration. This is in mind to close up. This is Leah's to close up and I'm going to turn it back to her. Thank you so much. And I will be here for questions as well as Justina and Leah when she's done.
One more slide. I muted myself, right? Okay. So the momentum for addressing the housing emergency is strong and it is happening now. The tenure housing plan was created by city staff. The community and the commission. This plan has sparked the energy and the will to address Flagstaff's housing emergency. Housing staff along with internal city divisions. Have expressed readiness to collaborate in the plan's policy initiatives and strategies. And we are excited to move forward with our community partners into the implementation process. So on behalf of the entire housing team. We want to thank each past and present housing commissioner. Each council member, city staff and our community for their involvement of this important process. We are asking you counsel for your consideration and adoption of Flagstaff's tenure housing plan. And like Sarah said, we, Justina, myself and Sarah are here to answer any questions you have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bluman. Thank you, Ms. Dar for the very thorough presentation. Counsel, comments, questions? Everything in between. Councilmember Shumani.
Thank you, Mayor and Leah, Justia, Justina and Sarah. Wow. This is so exciting. What a great plan and I really enjoyed going back through it, leading into today's discussion. Quick question. In regards to better supporting our unsheltered population. I noticed in the policies, there wasn't much talk about transitional housing. I understand that there's a very significant need for permanent housing. And, and we really have, I believe, a need for both transitional and permanent. But I was hoping someone might be able to speak to the discussions had regarding transitional housing. Amongst the working groups or the commissions or staff or whomever. And if that was something that might be able to be added as a policy. To add to the list. Sarah, do you have a thought to share?
I do have a thought to share and thank you for the question. You may notice that there's not really any particular housing type called out. Rather, the focus is on. Like the overall create goal is create housing options for households at all income levels and family sizes occupied. By local residents. Thanks for letting me look at my notes when we chat. The other one is in create for is amend zoning code to facilitate development of all housing types. Reduce homelessness in Flagstaff community and seek creative solutions to foster housing permanency for all. Where transitional would be a step there as well. We did this on purpose. Along the lines of it being a tenure plan. And as funding changes and strategies changed, we really wanted to focus on housing for all. So transitional fits into these strategies. We, folks have asked, well, why don't you mention this or why don't you mention that? If we mentioned one thing and perhaps not another, if this plan is used to back. Let's say a grant application from a local agency. And it's not mentioned in one of the specifics, we miss a housing type that maybe hasn't even been invented yet. We didn't, we didn't want to be in that situation. So it was actually on purpose that we did not start calling out all the housing types. So that we didn't inadvertently omit something or not look far enough into the future to be able to imagine what might be coming. Does that make sense?
It does, Sarah, and thank you so much for the explanation. I'm totally supportive of that. As you recall, I, I believe you probably know, I had a couple fair items, one of which spoke specifically to transitional housing. And seeing if we could do something locally and council voice that they supported the idea, but. Wanted it to be led through the housing commission. So I just want to make sure that the housing commission also has that charge. To address transitional housing as we start working through. But many great item, items on this, on this plan. I just, I also want to make sure we don't leave that one behind or left out, but that sounds, that sounds just fine. Thank you. And that's my only question there at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin.
Hi, everyone. I'll try to keep this brief. I realize it's getting late and it's been a long day. Very appreciative of all the staff's effort that went into this. It's very impressive. I did read the whole thing. I was looking for certain things and the, the, the things I wanted to see, I saw and the things I didn't want to find, I didn't find. So I am completely ready and willing to support this moving forward and I'm really excited to be able to do so. I just wanted to lift up a one thing in particular. You know, I, I think if I remember correctly, I was at least one of the voices, if not the voice, who was really. Harping on the idea of the, the intention of who we're serving with this document. You know, we don't want to just build housing stock and then have. A bunch of folks move into town. You know, this, this supply demand issues are real, I think. I don't think we can simply build our way into housing affordability. And those concerns were addressed in this new document. So I'm very glad that you've incorporated that clarification to the intention of the plan. The only thing that I would maybe add to that is, you know, we talk a lot about being able to keep people in Flagstaff who live here now. And, you know, even I will readily acknowledge that Flagstaff is going to continue to grow as the future unfolds. And so a part of that growth. What we need to be focusing on is the equity of opportunity for people to move into town. And it's, that's, that's a little bit of a distinction, but I, I think it's worth lifting up. Flagstaff is going to grow. Let's make sure we're invited people of all stripes, all colors, all economic backgrounds and all opportunity levels to live here. I think that's not just a social justice issue. It's an environmental justice concern. And the types of things that are addressed in this housing plan. Speak to that. And so just really, really grateful for it. I also really like the distinction of a unit creation or, you know, expanding existing housing stock. And the subsidy provision. The fact that those two are in balance and harmony with each other is very important to me. And it's there. Thank you very much. More work went into this than I will ever be able to appreciate. And the community here in Flagstaff has spoken. We want to see more housing stock. We want to see more opportunities for people to move into a variety of different types of homes. We need that continuum to be available, but we need to be building these units for people to live in them, not for developers to flip. Investment opportunities. And as long as we can keep those things in mind, I am fully on board with this tenure housing plan.
Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin. Counsel, any other comments, questions regarding the housing plan? Also happy to take motions for the approval.
Mayor, we do have a public comment on this item?
Oh, yes, we do. My apologies. Just. Seeing that again. So let's go to the public commenters after the, and then we'll turn it back to council.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first public commenter tonight is Brandon O'Brien. Brandon, you may go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Sure. Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. And first, I just wanted to compliment this plan overall because it's. Really wide ranging. I think it does a really good job of diagnosing why. The housing problems exist in the city and the challenges in confronting them. And before I go further and give potential critiques or feedback. I'd like to say I'm in favor of adopting this plan and starting to work on all these issues. I've spent the last two years at NAU studying the impact of short term rentals on. Western mountain towns like Flagstaff. And I've interviewed some of you and other city officials. And this really kind of fits into it in that way. I think one of the things I'd like to say related to diagnosing the current problems. That this does a really good job of. I, part of me wishes that it identified the ultimate goals or the ultimate. Policy fixes that could be done. I know it's a plan and I like that it's very actionable. But I wish there was some. Metric where it's like, okay, if we had the ability to. Ability to regulate short terminals, if we had the ability to put a tax on second homes, if we had the ability to do this. Then we would, and this is how we would do it. Because some of those things really could change with changes at the state legislature. And so I think it's good to identify what's possible in this moment, but also that what's possible could change dramatically potentially. And then the second thing kind of follows up on what councilmember Aslan said that. I think it was, you don't think we can build our way to housing affordability? And I really agree with that. I think. That was something I came up with again and again in my research. A lot of communities. Identify the problem and I think this is happening nationwide. As, oh, our housing stock is just too low and we need to build more housing. Nationwide, there's never been. Percentage wise and actually numbers wise, it's at the lowest rate of housing being built. For entry level homes across the country. And that's definitely the case in Flagstaff, problem that we have. And so there's an article in the Daily Sun in, at the end of two thousand sixteen that identified nearly six thousand. Housing units about to be built. And just five years later, we're now saying we have this major shortage in housing and.
Brendan, you're, unfortunately, we have three minutes per participant. But we, I'd be very, very interested in some of your research, the Daily Sun article. And please send any of that information to council@flagstaffaz.gov. I think that's very important for our considerations and we really do appreciate the, the input on that. And the research, I'm sure you're far more than many of us on this call, so I appreciate it.
All right, sure thing.
Yeah, and next public participant.
Victor Page, you may unmute yourself and address Mayor and Council. Mr. Victor Page, you may unmute yourself and address Mayor and Council. Sir, I can see that you are unmuted. Can you try speaking? Mayor, I am not hearing anything from Mr. Page. Would you like to move on?
Yeah, we'll, we'll circle back, but please, yeah, continue with the queue.
Terrific. Ms. Devon Laflin, you are next in the speaker queue. You have three minutes. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It's me again. I'm back. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight again on this important housing topic. I am speaking tonight as a private citizen. I also have the pleasure of serving on your housing commission and as the CEO of Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona. And I just want to start by thanking city staff, the community members who gave hundreds of hours of their time and the housing commission. To create the robust and thoughtful plan before you. This plan is critical for our community and I urge council to adopt the plan tonight without delay. As you know, our community continues to face an affordable housing emergency as housing prices continue to climb beyond the reach of low, moderate and median income households. The housing affordability crisis is a social justice issue and an economic development issue as more and more households consider leaving our community because of the high cost of housing. Housing Solutions is just finishing its annual rental attainability report, which will come out shortly. The data is pretty bleak. An average two bedroom apartment now rents for one thousand seven hundred and fifty eight dollars a month. A single parent wanting to rent that average two bedroom apartment would need to work eighty six point nine hours a week at minimum wage in order for the apartment to be affordable. That's simply not realistic. The average cost of a three bedroom unit is two thousand one hundred and eighty eight dollars a month. Homes for sale are difficult to find and expensive. I just checked the multiple listing service tonight and there are three homes listed for sale in Ponderosa Trails, the working class neighborhood where I live. Two of those homes are under contract and the remaining home has been on the market for a whopping one day with a list price of seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Now is the time to focus on strategies to increase affordable housing. Adopting this plan is a first step, a critical first step. Our next step as a community is to make sure the plan doesn't sit on the shelf. And that the strategies and recommendations in here get implemented and adopted. It's also the time to robustly fund housing initiatives and support policies that will make significant differences. I challenge the council, the city and the community to come together to support affordable housing investment. And I hope today is a first step in an ongoing and thoughtful discussion about how we make decent housing available to all. Thanks again for your time, your support and your dedication to housing as a basic human right.
Thank you, Devon. Next public comment.
Mr. Tyler Denham, you have three minutes to address Mayor and Council.
Hi, thank you. This is Tyler Denham, back for comment on this item. As one of the members of the Housing Commission that approved the plan to be forwarded to City Council. I obviously support your adoption of the plan tonight. Although I'm speaking now as a private citizen and I just want to thank everyone that was involved in the creation of the plan. Between the dozens of subgroups and working sessions, commission meetings and public feedback. This document reflects hundreds of hours of resident engagement. And really, it's just a shame that three minutes is not enough time to thank everyone individually. As for the plan itself. I'm confident in either this version passing today or a version incorporating feedback from you passing quickly thereafter. So I'm, I'm genuinely excited for the near future where with the plan in hand, you are able to make real progress on housing affordability. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler, and thank you for your service to our housing commission. Next public comment.
Ms. Cara House, you may please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor DC, Vice Mayor Daggett and all honored council members. My name is Cara House. And while I currently serve on the Housing Commission, I am speaking today as a private citizen and not on behalf of the commission. I thank council for considering the adoption of the tenure housing plan and I want to acknowledge all the work that has gone into this plan. I'm proud of the work that has gone into it from the Housing Commission and so grateful to all the focus groups. Citizen commenters, staff, organizations and agencies and many others who contributed to that work. I'm grateful to the Housing Division team members for simply innumerable volumes of time in both hours and emotional labors. That they dedicated to compiling the hundreds of thoughts, ideas, recommendations and more that have gone into this plan. I'm grateful to our council liaisons, past and present, for their consistent and considered support for the work of the commission in developing this plan. And thank all council members who have engaged in discourse with the Housing Commission on the development of the plan. With nearly half of Flagstaff households living cost burdened, housing is an unavoidable challenge facing our community. With the declaration of a housing emergency in December of two thousand twenty, council acknowledged this challenge and called for action. This tenure plan, I believe, is the first step on a long journey toward delivering actionable, realistic measures to address this challenge and this crisis in our community. While some may hesitate to address this as a crisis, the knowledge that some twelve thousand citizens are living in less than ideal housing situations. And fifty eight percent of our citizens are between somewhat likely and nearly certain to. and 58% of our citizens are between somewhat likely and nearly certain to leave our city due to housing costs, this tells me that the situation is critical and the time to act is now. As with all such plans, I ask that both council and our citizens look at this plan as a living document with strategies and recommendations that will adapt and shift with our needs. This is not an end, but a beginning to the work toward ensuring our ongoing commitment to meeting the affordable housing needs of all citizens through all neighborhoods in our city. I hope with the adoption of this plan, we will continue to focus on ongoing partnerships and relationships that will advance the goals and recommendations of the plan. This is not a single-team effort, but the work of a collective that must continuously engage, collaborate, and compromise to meet our shared purpose in addressing what we have acknowledged as a housing emergency. I've said it before and I say it again now, if not us, then who? If not now, then when? I thank you for taking decisive action now and for your willingness to be part of advancing this action toward meeting the constantly growing need for safe, affordable, equitable, and attainable housing for all who call Flagstaff home. Thank you.
Thank you, Cara, and thank you for your own contributions to this plan and all of your hard work as well. Next public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Michelle James, you may go ahead and address council.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm Michelle James. I'm Executive Director of Friends of Flagstaff's Future. FQ is thankful for city staff, the Housing Commission, the informal working groups, and council and their work to create the final tenure housing plan. FQ provided extensive comments on the draft housing plan in November of last year. We appreciate the discussions that followed with the Housing Section and the inclusion of many of FQ's comments in the final plan. FQ appreciates the relationship we've built with the Housing Section and we look forward to working with the city as implementation of the housing plan begins. Going forward, we ask that the council give special attention to the following concerns. The housing plan provides an excellent overarching narrative of the needs, concerns, and complexities related to affordable housing in Flagstaff. FQ is concerned that the issues outlined in these sections are not, at this point, linked to a specific strategy or initiative. We recommend linking narrative text directly to the policy initiatives and strategies tables located at the end of the plan. This will lend clarity and increase the use of this document as a roadmap for the future and will greatly assist future staff, council members, and community members going forward. Two, how will city staff and councils determine in which order individual or groups of initiatives and strategies should be addressed and funded? The strategies outlined in the plan are interrelated and connected. Some initiatives cannot be completed until others are first completed. Prioritization of implementation of planned strategies is important in order to ensure timely implementation, address barriers, and communicate with the public. How will, three, how will city ensure, how will the city ensure that this plan is implemented, especially in regard to proposed development projects and/or other city actions that connect to housing? It appears to FQ that that responsibility for ensuring the long-term implementation of the plan falls to the city manager. FQ encourages the council to clarify how the city will ensure implementation of the plans, initiatives, and strategies. FQ is pleased that stringent annual evaluation and reporting elements are included in the housing plan. And finally, we applaud the council for its recognition of the urgency around both affordable housing and climate change. We know staff changes and council membership changes. We urge council to keep addressing and prioritizing both the housing plan and the climate emergencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next public commenter.
Ms. Ross Schaefer Altenbaugh, could you please go ahead?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the Flagstaff City Council. My name is Ross Schaefer Altenbaugh and I am the Executive Director of Flagstaff Shelter Services. I am a member of the Flagstaff Housing Commission, but tonight I am here representing myself and Flagstaff Shelter Services. As you know, FSS is one of the largest emergency shelters in all of Arizona. And daily, we see the devastating result of the lack of affordable housing in our own community. So tonight, I am here to show my enthusiastic support of the tenure housing plan you have in front of you. I want to give thanks to the city and its housing staff and the countless hours that so many citizens in our community put in for their perseverance in putting this plan together. The National Alliance to End Homelessness makes the accurate and bold statement, as the gap between increasing housing costs and stagnant incomes widen, the end result is that more people will become homeless. Our community has already said that housing is an emergency. We literally cannot afford to not adopt this housing plan. The plan that put this, the people that put this plan together understood the problem, but they also see the road to solutions through action. The individuals and families at risk of becoming homeless in our community need our city leadership to act tonight. Join me in supporting this plan. Our community is looking to you to not only be able to identify this emergency, but to adopt the plan to get us through it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Next public commenter.
Ms. Heather, excuse me, Ms. Heather Marcy, could you please go ahead?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Heather Marcy, representing myself. First of all, I just want to say, great job, Leah Bloom and the Housing Section and the Housing Commission. I want to fully express my support for the tenure housing plan, especially in regards to the ballot measure for the housing bond. You know, I'm one of these folks that we're talking about tonight that is priced out of the market and has been here for 20-plus years and wants to stay and tried to buy this last go-round. In my household, we have... Oh, Stacy, was that for me?
Uh, no, please go ahead.
Oh, I'm so sorry. So in my household, we do have a six-figure income. We had six figures for a down payment. Our price cap was at about $550,000 and we were looking between 2020 and 2021. You know, we realized summer of 2021, this was not going to happen for us. Between the all-cash offers, the 50 to 100 to 200 over ask, and we've seen it rapidly rise since then. As Devonna said, you know, I check, I check the MLS all the time. Everything's between $600,000 to $800,000. And, you know, one specific experience I had that I wanted to share with council tonight was with one of the newer developments, Orion Timber Sky. They advertised homes starting in the 400s. And when we approached them, the developer shared that, one, you'd put a security deposit of $5,000 down, then you would make your best bid on one of their lots. And if the bid was successful, there would be a $75,000 fee for the concrete to be poured. So I just want to share that because, you know, I think what gets communicated upfront about price points is deceiving. And the market changes, and I know that prices are driven by those market changes. But I do think creating more units that cross a broad range of income levels is important. So I'm glad we're talking about serving multiple income levels, broad ranges through this plan. In terms of implementation, I really think strategic partnerships are going to be important. The city does so much and you all can't do everything. And, you know, in terms of my work in victim services and social services for the past 16 years, I'm really well acquainted with a lot of the, a lot of the services and folks that are working in housing. And so, you know, I would like to see the city contract with people like Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona to really start moving the dial on some of the low-income housing for individuals, for families, to serve all the folks that are in need. You know, they've been doing this the past several years. They have this dialed in.
Thank you. Participant, but would like to hear more. You're welcome to also email council. I'm also very excited about this plan. For council@flagstaffaz.gov. And, yeah, anything further, we're happy to hear. Thank you. Next public commenter.
Thank you, Mayor. We are going to try to see if Mr. Page had, was able to fix his microphone. Mr. Page, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and try to speak again. Mr. Page, we are still not hearing you. Mayor, I would suggest at this point that he probably email council@flagstaffaz.gov with his comments.
Yes, please do. We'd love to hear from you. Council@flagstaffaz.gov. And speak for myself as well, I'm sure, rest of council. We have our emails open while we're in these meetings, so happy to read your commentary. All right, and I assume then that was our last public comment.
Yes, Mayor, it is.
Thank you. Well, with that, we'll turn it in internally here to council. So council, comments, questions? Motions? All of the above? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff. Thank you to all the public that lent comments and all of the people who participated in the countless meetings. There were really great questions asked and, as you can see, great feedback given. I'm so happy to see us at this place where we're ready to adopt this. And I'm so grateful that City Council and a growing portion of the community is recognizing affordable housing as the emergency that it is. Our, our business owners have been telling us this for a long time and people trying to find adequate rentals, people wanting to buy a house. They've been saying this for a long time, but I feel like finally, the community is, as a whole, is hearing it. And I'm just excited about where we're going to go with this. So I am, I'm so happy to adopt this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember McCarthy?
All right, thank you, Mayor. I am going to support this. But I just wanted, for the record, say that there's things in this that I really don't like and there's things in it that I think are just wonderful. Just to give a couple examples, I don't think I would support increasing our sales tax for this purpose. That's Create 3.4. Create 4.2. It talks about taking industrial land and using it for housing. Well, on a case-by-case basis, we might do that. But I am concerned that we don't have a lot of industrial land which we need for jobs. On the other side, you know, Create 4.7. It talks about what we can do to encourage ADUs and, you know, and which will create some more density without compromising neighborhoods. I love the idea of Create 5.6, which is pre-approved plans. I mean, why should we have to have a new plan drawn for every lot? One of the reasons housing is less expensive, among others, in the Phoenix area is they tend to build hundreds of houses that have the exact same floor plan. That saves a lot of money. I also protect 1.1. I feel strongly, and I talked to council about this before, that we need to talk to our legislators and when the time is ripe, get the change so that second homes and vacation homes and short-term rentals are taxed at a higher rate than they currently are. There's two houses on my street where the people aren't here even one day a month. Those are houses that are built in my neighborhood and they're not serving any purpose for people that live in Flagstaff. So in summary, I'm definitely going to support this enthusiastically, but don't interpret that to mean that I completely buy into every little phrase in the, in the document. So thank you. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, and thank you to the Commission, the Flagstaff community, and city staff for the time and commitment on this. What an incredible job. I do have a couple of thoughts. One would be on the evaluation process, the measurement of the process and benchmarks. I'm just wondering if with the detailed list, if we can, when we get going on the plan, really get specific on when the project is estimated to start, when it is starting. Maybe an update midway through, the estimated completion date, and then the actual completion date. And can we somehow get that out to the public? Maybe more on a live timeline instead of once a year? I think it might be helpful for the public to see that, see the progress. I know it would be helpful for me, just talking from a council member, but also as a community member, having those live updates might be, might be helpful. Sarah, I see you're on the screen. Do you want to answer that maybe briefly before I go on?
Sure. That is our full intent there, is that it's not just a, we don't just wait for the annual piece there. But rather that we will be doing semi-regular updates to the Housing Commission on progress and sharing those with council as well. Our intent is to only do a formal, published, full report on an annual basis. We didn't want to overcommit. The other thing is that quite often, things with housing take time. And so a monthly update isn't super functional because it's going to be like, we worked on this again this month. Sometimes even a quarterly update can be hard, as you know, program's still under development or house still under construction. But we intend to include a schedule along with those items as well as items that aren't necessarily something that we need funding for, but rather staff time is dedicated to. So we'll prioritize the things that we... No, we're not going to prioritize. We are relying on the plan and the community feedback that has established that prioritization. So we tackling those things as time goes along. But if you look at those charts, there are a number of things that are ongoing. So we'll also be reporting on the ongoing things as we go along. And I hope that that fits with what you were asking for.
Absolutely. Thank you. My other thought is on collaboration. I know you all do such a great job reaching out to our partners and I just want to make sure, or say that I would like to see even more of that. And there are so many partners out there that want to work with the city. And I know you all are doing that, but maybe updating us on what is Habitat for Humanity doing? What is their plan? What is Housing Solutions doing? What is their plan? And making sure that, again, myself as a council member, but also a community member, understands the full scope, not just what the city is doing, but what our partners are doing and how we're all working together. I just, I firmly believe the only way we're going to do this is if we all work together and, and seeing that broader picture with our partners, I think, is always beneficial. Other than that, great job. Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone. This was a huge lift and, and a good one. So I appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Salas?
It's exactly a year, two months, and two weeks ago when the previous council declared the housing emergency. And I could not express my gratitude, gratitude and appreciation more than big, grateful, thankful hearts to, to everyone who was involved in, in developing and evolving this housing plan in developing and evolving this housing plan from the Housing Section to the Housing Commission to all the community members and stakeholders and and uh members of the public who participated in molding this plan. Um and I and I agree, this is this is an evolving plan. And uh and I agree with uh Councilmember McCarthy. I I may not support some of the strategies that have been mentioned, like increasing sales staff or or uh repurposing or rezoning uh industrial zone to to turn into residential. But I support most of the strategies that were were identified. I I commend staff and the the Housing Commission to uh also include uh the racial disparity and also in involving the the county as a community partner. You know, the it all boils down to the 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 essence of the plan, you know, speaking to resiliency, um healthcare, uh neighborhood and equity, sustainability, zoning and land use and economic opportunity. Um keeping in mind that workforce housing attainability is very integral to to economic uh vitality, not only for Flagstaff, but for the region. We have thirty-eight percent of our uh Flagstaff workers and uh workforce employed in Flagstaff who live outside the city limit because of lack of uh attainable housing for our own workforce. So hopefully that can be addressed. And boy, just a couple of days ago, we heard um there was an announcement that the Arizona Department of Housing is um has about, I think, forty million uh to provide about five hundred transitional homes for Arizona residents who are currently homeless in rural Arizona and Flagstaff was identified as one of uh 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 this the towns that the the Department of Housing is looking into. And again, I am um in support of this plan and also all all measures in terms of gaining state and federal support in terms of policy and dollars and pushing forth a partnership and collaboration, especially private-public partnership to uh implement this plan. Thank you. Hearts.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Um Councilmember Shumoni?
Thank you, Mayor. Um one last comment from me. Oh, my gosh, you know, just just hearing all the public comment and the presentation and just kind of reflecting on what this all means. Um Sarah and Leah, now I'm gonna start getting emotional, but this is such a big deal. And and I'm just so excited and 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 feeling a bit emotional just because this is such a big deal, Mayor and Council and to the community. This is such a big deal. And and I can't, I can't uh, you know, help but want to recognize the previous council and and their efforts leading into this with declaring a housing emergency, which I'm hearing council members speak to with more clarity. There's been numerous times where we've gone back and forth calling it a crisis, an emergency. I think as time progresses and the emergency becomes more and more clear, I believe council has it pretty clear that it is an emergency and that council has declared an emergency. So I'm very proud to hear that becoming a a a known understanding amongst council members. That's a big deal to me. Uh we established a housing commission not too long ago and that commission got started and going at a hundred miles an hour and and Leah, Justina, Sarah, Vice Mayor Daggett, you know, and all the commissioners and working groups. Wow, you know, I I wasn't involved at the level at that that level of of weeds of of your efforts. But I I have a feeling I know a little bit about the work that was put in and and I can really appreciate and respect your efforts and and your commitment to the city. You know, I feel like I feel super humbled to be in the position to approve this plan and 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 take all the hard work that's been put into this and help it just that that one more step moving forward. Um you know, as as one as Heather Marcy, one of the public speakers mentioned, the cost of housing and and the struggles of making it, making it here. Uh I'm right there with you. I I don't know if I'm gonna be able to buy a house in Flagstaff. And and that's just the reality. Uh it's definitely a a difficult time we're we're at in the community and we've reached a fork in the road. And we have a choice to make, you know, how do we want to grow up? And how do we want to progress as a community? Do we want to become the next Aspen or or whatever example we wanted to tie call uh and 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 utilize? Or do we want to maintain our Flagstaff culture and diversity? Councilor Asim, you talked about, you know, that equity lens and diversity of of who we want to bring into town. And and I also want to just make the point that we need to keep Flagstaff as whole as possible as we're seeing these these this mass movement of potential residents leaving our community. So uh just a couple last points in closing, um before we go to our good gift of Vice Mayor's comments and motion. Um Leah in the through or Sarah through the lens of equity. Um I I I loved all the different co- points made about that in the plan. And I just asked that we also overlay a a lens of location with equity. Uh I know that we're very aware of that. It's serious, see, not in your head. And it's almost like there could be a map overlay the city through the lens of equity and and efforts could be prioritized based off of location and the points that they get for being in the different locations. But I I know that that's such a hurdle and I know that this it's it's a political hurdle again, council. So um maybe we can actually overcome it and address it this time around. Um and then secondly, my other comment is in regards to encouraging the adaptive reuse of buildings. Um I just wanted to share while while we talked about it this evening, NAH comes to mind, the hospital and their their old location or their current location. I I know there's gonna be a lot of conversation about that in the in the months, years to come. But I just wanted to point that see, there's a lot of talk about housing there and and I think that's a great opportunity. So I just want to make sure the Housing Commission and our team are are at the front of that conversation and and are ready for that. That's all I have. Uh I'm just beyond grateful and humbled to be in this position to to see this progress this evening and thankful to everyone that's been involved. Um thank you and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumoni. And uh before passing the torch to Vice Mayor Daggett to make comments and emotion and emotion, I just I I also want to express my my gratitude. This has been a plan that is extremely well thought out, well-vetted with a extensive amount of community input. Uh the efforts that have been put into this are are astronomically larger than most of the plans and ideas and thoughts that we've put forth. It has been a community-driven initiative and plan and uh with so many individuals that, again, I won't, I I can't name them all by any means in such a short time. I just uh w- want to thank um Sarah, Justina, Leah, for all of your work on this, the Housing Commission and all of the community input. Uh with that, though, I would like to turn it over to our Vice Mayor for comment and the well-deserved motion as our lia- liaison to the Housing Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Um very well said and rest of council. Um great comments tonight. Thank you. Uh one thing that I would like to bring up again is just that we have this plan now. Um we're elevating housing in terms of importance and I would really like to see housing at the leadership table um so that they are involved in all community discussions and um and I see city manager um there and do you want to say anything to that or you're just telling me that you hear me?
If I may, Mayor, I just wanted to give you assurance that that we have heard you and uh we will be working on that. Uh so rest assured and uh stay tuned. You'll be hearing back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Uh and so, without further ado, I would like to move that we read Resolution Number two zero two two dash zero three by title only.
I second.
Second that. All I wanted to second it. I used to be a liaison to the Housing Commission, so I was gonna try to second it, but there was too much enthusiasm. So I thirded it.
All right. Well, uh thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Yes.
I'm sorry. Could we please clarify who made that second?
I do believe I I beat the others to the punch.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries unanimously, City Clerk.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council adopting the City of Flagstaff's ten-year housing plan.
I move to adopt.
Oh, who's got the second? I I'll I'll stand back this time. Who's got the second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Oh, sweet pizza, Shumoni. Uh Councilmember Sweet uh seconds that. Uh any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Uh we are now down to our uh agenda item fourteen for future agenda item requests. Uh the first is a request by myself to place on a future agenda discussion regarding a housing program for elderly citizens to have an assisted roommate in exchange for rent. Uh I've been noticing that this has, uh this has been a discussion um within the Coganio County Advocates for Human Services um for a number of years and has been found to be a way in other cities that help to utilize current housing stock. There is many elderly individuals who own their homes who are on the cusp of needing to go into um some more assistive l- living type circumstances but are not there yet and have a widow widower with three bedrooms that uh could help with, for example, a uh potentially a a master student in social work or a nursing student or anyone else in the community that can not only get lower cost or free rent for helping around the house, but also it can create more workforce-type development of learning how to uh uh help take care of individuals, build a resume simultaneously. Now, I'm not sure if the fair process is the um best place for it or if this is should be placed potentially as a um program for our budget sessions upcoming. Um as obviously, it would need to have a certain dollar amount just to ensure that you know, maybe even a halftime position as a coordinator to ensure fingerprint clearance cards are taken up, continue to keep a pulse on the um community members that might be involved to make sure everything's okay with the cir- circumstance. Um but uh however it may be, uh this is, this is some of the newer thinking in other cities like Austin, Texas, that is coming up to help with um housing for those who are able-bodied and can assist in a home to those who are 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 starting to struggle and just need some basic help like you know, cleaning kitchen, running groceries, you know, um doing yard work. Those those kinds of things that are very important for quality of life while uh those are while individuals own their home and do have room for others to uh be in the abode. And as we're in the housing discussion, which the both of these fairs are pretty well-suited for you know, being able to utilize greater our housing stock that already exists is definitely something that um would would help just a little bit in this circumstance. So I'm asking uh for council support either through the fair process or potentially the nod of the heads to um potentially add this as a discussion point in our um the budget discussions in April. So with that, I will live with, I I'm getting a thumbs up from McCarthy.
I have a question.
Yes, uh Councilmember Aslan and then Councilmember Shumoni has a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh this this is a great idea. I think uh the devil's in the details. Uh it seems I I don't under, I I don't know if you're looking for something that would be to be operated. Uh I guess if you're thinking about budgetary considerations, you are. I just, I wonder about the liability issues here. They seem to be monumental. Um if I just peek under the hood, even just a little bit. Um so anyway, I think there would be a lot of additional conversations associated with the creation of a new program, even if there are good models elsewhere around the country. I'm just thinking out loud.
Absolutely. And uh duly noted, Councilmember Aslan and uh the, I mean, as the fair process, this is something that we would be kicking to um staff to be able to assess. What are other cities doing? Are they using nonprofits for these types of purpose purposes? Is it done by the city? What are the liability issues? Those are very valid questions that through the the request would be able to be evaluated if council members are willing to move forward to a- assess those things. Uh Councilmember Shumoni?
Thank you, Mayor. Um interesting fair. Um you know, after that that last conversation about the ten-year housing plan, I do wonder, you know, with the workload, um I just wonder what what staff would say. And I know that this is just a fair and we're even, you're even talking about whether or not this is the right approach. Um but I know we can't really go back and forth with staff at this point. And but I I I kind of want to know it what what staff feels about this, if this is a city effort or if this would be better within like a community partner, a a community nonprofit to lead this effort. Just given that we have limited resources and limited like capacity, I'm just trying to think, you know, for the well-being of the organization and and what we're trying to achieve, is this the best use of our time and energy to put staff on? I just don't know. Um maybe you've talked to Sarah and and the team that you can speak to. Um but I guess I have questions and I I don't feel comfortable moving ahead. Um I I just feel like I I just don't know.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumoni. And that's the whole purpose of this as being an agenda item request. Those are valid questions that we need answered, but we need to know if there's um council support to ask those questions so that way council, or so that way staff can provide some uh educated suggestions. So it's a all valid questions from you and Councilmember Aslan. It's a matter of are we willing to just see about this and what options might be available through nonprofit partners? What would that mean for the city staff? I mean, this is something where, you know, we 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 can assess what realm of possibilities that this type of program could exist or not based on what other cities are doing. Um so again, we're very valid questions. It's a matter of right now, as a fair item, whether it is a situation where you're willing to ask those questions of staff so that way they can come back to us with uh their thoughts. Um Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, I would like to have this conversation and have all, you know, weigh in on all of these questions and get some additional information.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And I meant to have my camera on.
Oh, you're all good. Uh uh Mr. Vensel?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to respond to sorry, I have an echo here. Wanted to respond to the comment Councilmember Shumoni made. Yeah, I don't think it's appropriate to ask those questions now. I think it's for a discussion.
Uh Councilmember Shumoni?
Thank you, Mayor. So given that that's the reality and and actually in your comments, I I do support this moving forward. I think this is an interesting and creative approach. Um I'm very curious to see what staff brings back to us. I was kind of hoping that staff might be able to engage a little bit rather than committing the full, I forget the threshold of of hours of time that they need to put in. But um given that, you know, this is how we have things set up, um I I I will support this conversation moving forward for sure. Thank you. But um given that, you know, this is how we have things set up, um I I I will support this conversation moving forward for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimon. Uh Councilmember Sweet.
I have a lot of questions, but definitely wanting to move this forward and find out what staff has to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Well, with that, uh we do have a council direction. Um so we are good to move on to Vice Mayor Daggett's future Agenda Item Request, which is Item fourteen B. Uh request by Vice Mayor Daggett to place on a future den- agenda a discussion regarding an ordinance to protect renters from income source discrimination. Uh Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, I went into this a little bit when I first brought this up. But I've seen that there are other communities that protect renters. Um especially renters that have veterans vouchers or um section uh section eight vouchers. So I'd like to have the discussion about whether the legalities around it and whether we can do it. And um and I hope that you'll support it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Council. I'm happy to jump in, but uh oh, Councilmember Sweet and then Councilmember Shimon.
Thank you. I support having this conversation, so moving it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimon.
Yeah, that's fine with me, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh I would also um I I would also be in support of this, uh just to note that Tucson has. Uh moved forward with this, uh which was exciting to read about a month ago. So um hopefully, within the state of Arizona, we're already seeing some movement towards the research on this. And the um uh drafting of an ordinance from down south. That would help us to um inform ourselves on ordinance, what it might look like for the City of Flagstaff. And um that's nice when those circumstances exist, so we may not have to put so many resources from our legal staff into this. Given that there may be a a draft in the works already. Um so definitely in support and appreciate you bringing this forth, uh Vice Mayor. Uh Councilmember Aslan.
Just wanted to mention for the record on both counts of fourteen A and B, I'm supportive of moving them forward. We'll see what happens from the conversations. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Um just make sure, oh, that was Councilmember Aslan with his hand and up. And with that, I think we are good to go for direction uh with the future Agenda Item Request. So we are down to a Gen item fifteen, which is public participation. Do we do we have anyone um for this section? City Clerk, Deputy City Clerk.
Mayor, I do not have anybody for public participation.
All right. Well, thank you. We're down to Gen Item sixteen, which is the informational items two from Mayor, Council, and Staff in future Agenda Item Requests. Since we did the liaison reports in um roll call order, we'll do reverse roll call order on this one. Uh starting with Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. A couple of exciting things happening this Friday. One is the I Heart Pluto Festival, a night of discovery, is happening at the Orpheum Theater, six P M Friday. And I will be attending the Athena Awards along with some fellow council members Friday. And I would just like to say congratulations to everyone that was nominated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Uh Councilmember Shimon.
Thank you, Mayor. Um thank you, everybody, for a long but very important meeting today. That was a long one, another long one, but uh I think it was very important and, Mayor, we covered a lot of grounds. And I thought you helped us get through that efficiently, so thank you for helping chair that and get us along and cover that ground. Uh good work, staff, good work, community, uh a lot to celebrate today. Tomorrow, as Councilmember Sweet had mentioned earlier in her liaison reports, the Mountain Line Board is meeting from ten to noon. And those meetings are streamed live on YouTube and hopefully our council meetings will one day be streamed live on YouTube as well. But I'll save that for another conversation. Uh that is coming soon. But if you wanna tune in, you can tune in on the Mountain Line YouTube channel between ten and noon tomorrow. Other than that, I believe that is all I had. Yeah, that's all I'm gonna bring attention to. It's been a long day. Have a great night, everybody, and and thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimon. Councilmember Salas.
Yes, uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh yeah, I heart Pluto. There's a series of events this week as well and also shout out to all the community partners who are involved. Well with our I heart Pluto, especially Mother Row Brewing Company. Who that uh the uh who made a custom craft beer called The Lowell Lager. So with um special artwork to uh of um uh I heart Pluto event. And uh also upcoming next week is uh, or I think it's it begins this Thursday. It's the Arizona Beer Week, so let's celebrate our eight. Eight craft breweries in town. And Friday, uh we will have the State Transportation Board meeting at City Hall. And uh enjoy the rest of your week.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Councilmember McCarthy.
Yes, as Ms. Salas noted, the the State Transportation Board will be meeting here in Flagstaff Friday, nine o'clock. In council chambers. So uh I'm looking forward to that. Other than that, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of the really interesting events going on. Around um um Black History Month. There are quite a few, there are discussions and films at N A U. The Lived Black Experience has some really interesting discussions coming up. And I just um encourage everyone to to Google Black History Month, N A U. And you'll come up with all the um events and I hope to see you all at many of them.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, uh folks touched, uh other councilmembers touched on uh some of the things I wanted to bring up. But the I'll I heart Pluto for Friday as well as this week of events. Uh the Athena Awards on Friday, the transportation, State Transportation Ward coming to Flagstaff, which we're um very welcoming of. And um I'll just to add on that tomorrow, I'm honored to be a part of the Arizona Dialogue. Around access to men- mental health services. Um and looking forward to a good discussion with policymakers, uh service providers. And those recipients of um mental health services um across the state. That can help us better understand and coordinate our efforts towards um mental health issues. Within our mutual communities. So with that, I think that about sums it up. City Manager, do you have anything for us this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for a thoughtful meeting. If you can, we we sent out a uh feeler about a possible date for a half-day retreat. We'd like to affirm that up. The date is Thursday, March thirty-first. We're looking at a half-day morning retreat. I am having dialogue as we speak with a possible facilitator. The topic is uh the five-year plan. Uh we will be convening at the staff level a a few times in advance of that to prepare for a good and informed discussion. So Thursday, March thirty-first in the morning, um exact time and venue yet to be determined. Thank you so much.
Thank you, City Manager. Well, without further ado, thank you for the hearty discussion tonight, all the work of our staff and community and getting all of this organized. Um and with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Night.